2023 meeting of the school committee. And we are going to begin this evening. I'm going to begin by turning the meeting over to Dr. Hackett.
Okay, so second item on the agenda is a consideration of reorganization of the school committee.
Can we, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is out of order or not, but I'd like to make a motion that we consider postponing this until after town meeting pursuant to our suspending our policy that allows us to have the meeting. Yes, my motion, to be more clear, is to suspend the policy to have the reorganization in the first meeting after the town election, postpone it until after spring town meeting for continuity of leadership through town meeting.
Okay, all right, so a motion on the floor, a second?
Second. So just to clarify, the motion is to temporarily suspend Policy BDA and the reorganization it describes to a time certain. That would be our first regular meeting in May after the close of spring town meeting.
Well said. And I might just add, if I could, that we should also, I know this came up last year as well, and to refer to policy, to consider whether we should add the ability to have this election right now or to have it after town meetings. I think it makes a lot more sense to have the continuity of the current chair to present at the meeting.
So I would second that motion, and since I started this last year for the same reason, I sit here today, I feel the same way, even maybe a little more strongly, only because, as I think we all know, there are some important conversations and engagements going on right now with FinCom and with town management with respect to our administration and school committee leadership that I think are really important. We have subcommittee meetings coming up later this week, so I know people are really fully engaged. And I would like to see us get through spring town meeting. And I wonder if, if not this spring, certainly early this summer before, you know, things get sleepy, I think we should talk about this policy and whether it makes sense to either change when we reorganize outright, or perhaps even give school committees of the future the option of reorganizing after the municipal election, which will be tonight, or another option, which is to do it after spring town meeting. Because I can imagine school committees in the future might want to take advantage of one option or the other. But that's not a conversation for tonight, but I think that's an important conversation that we could have.
So to clarify the motion, the motion is to delay the reorganization of the school committee as outlined in Policy BDA to a date certain at the close of town meeting in May.
And our first regular meeting after the close of spring town meeting.
Does the motion also include a referral of BDA to policy subcommittee?
I think it makes sense. If people had an objection with that, I would be willing to amend it.
Your motion.
But let's, I'm going to go with that as the motion for now, because I think we should, I think it would be good to have clarity around this, so we don't have to suspend the policy.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a sec, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I guess I'll just say I understand the benefits. I also think that there's other possibilities. I think we can do both at once. I think we, as a committee, can allow folks to continue to do their engagement around town meeting while we can let other folks take on other pieces and move that work forward. I'll just note, we had our retreat in December, and we had a lot of things that we were going to get going, and we haven't really done any of that yet, and it's about to be April, and some of those things we were supposed to already do in March. So I think there's a lot of work. We can certainly spread it around. We have flexibility as different people to continue what they're doing. There's no reason, if someone is in a particular position, that they have to be the one who does X, Y, or Z. So I just put that out there as another possibility.
Further discussion?
I would just say, I think that's a fair point, and I think we could do that work regardless. I still think moving it out this time again for the similar reasons as last year and having the flexibility in the future for future committees, as Mr. Nixon said, to have a choice. I think, we have the policy committee review that to decide to bring it back to us.
And I'll just add a little factoid for the audience tonight. So although the select board typically reorganizes right after the municipal election, and typically the school committee does, we didn't last year, other committees like FinCom and Capitol, they reorganize after spring town meeting. So there are some pros and cons to each, and I look forward to having that discussion.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Me.
Okay, all right, so motion passes four to one. And I think part of this was about me having some control and power over the meeting that you just wanted to rip away from me as quickly as possible.
Yeah, in four minutes.
So I turned the meeting back over to the chair.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the confidence of the committee, for myself and Mr. Hopcroft, to bring us forward through town meeting. We certainly appreciate that and hope to do the best to represent this committee at town meeting and in the discussions Mr. Nixon was talking about. So we appreciate that. We will move forward to the public comment period, which is next on the agenda. The public comment periods for a total of 15 minutes with no more than three minutes per speaker. We ask public comment participants to identify themselves, and we do not have any Zoom access to public comment today, so we don't need to worry about the last one. But I also do not see anyone here for public comment. Unless anyone wants to rise, then we will move forward with no public comment.
Just point of order, does it make sense to introduce some of the student guests tonight?
Yep, we will.
I'm trying to figure out where that is on the agenda. I just don't want to forget them, that's all.
Yep, superintendent, chair, and student remarks.
Very good, okay.
Yeah. We also have at the top of our meeting the consideration of WIFI grants, totally $87,160. And with us this evening is Ms. Karen Conley from the Winchester Education Foundation to present those grants to the committee.
Would you like me to sit somewhere other than directly in front of what you have up?
You can pull off to the side, or you can use Charlie's chair if you'd like. She's not here yet.
A little bit off to the side, it seems, since you've put them up, not very helpful. Yes, so I included in the information that I sent to the committee prior to this meeting all of the grants that we've given for this year. You've already accepted most of them, but just so that you see the trajectory. This latest batch of grants, we have three professional development. Two of them are contin, actually, all three are continuations of things we've done in the past. Teachers as scholars, WIFI was one of the founding members of that group. And I think that I'm happy to say that it is continuing with its emphasis on learning for learning's sake, but over the last few years, I've seen a change in some of their course offerings that perhaps are a little bit more on point for some of our educators. And I think that educators have aligned themselves with classes that perhaps more closely mirror content area, which was something we had been concerned about. Grading for Equity and standards-based grading is the second year of a collaboration. I think you're probably all extremely familiar with it. One of the things that this will pay for is some personalization of the Aspen software, plus additional professional development and work for teachers. I don't know, Dr. Ellen Emma wrote the grant with Carolyn Plotzky. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I think that captures it. We want to, right now, our pilot group, as you've heard, is doing concurrent grading. So those teachers that are doing that are actually running two report cards. So we want to streamline that for them to be able to do it better in Aspen. So we're working with Aspen on that project now. And we have a whole new set of teachers that want to be involved. So thank you for your generous support, which will allow us to continue both tiers with the district providing one and WIFI providing the other.
And again, you know, it's an example of a grant that WIFI is pleased that the district continues to fund, to help fund and to move forward. The American Speech Language Hearing Association Convention, this comes to Massachusetts about every four years, and the ability to send all of our speech language folks without having to pay travel is huge. We've approved it this early because, and it probably will not end up costing $5,600, but teachers can sign up as soon as educators can sign up, as soon as registration is open, and they'll get a discount. And we are all about that. MYFLEX is an interesting grant, and I don't know, some of the students might want to weigh in on the difficulty in scheduling Wind Block, and Wind Block has become kind of an unwieldy animal. And perhaps there's some concern on the part of some educators that at any given moment, the district doesn't really have its hands around where all of the students are. We thought that was a good reason to look at MYFLEX. We did feel like a proof of concept of one year made sense, and after that, if it is successful, we would ask the district to take it on. It's up to the district at that point. We won't fund it again. Very exciting to see, you know, we had some years that we hadn't seen a lot of grant requests from the high school, and this year we saw a lot of really creative requests. This Visiting Artist Master Class takes advantage of a woman in the community who is very well-known. She does fabric-based designs. Her stuff is very cool. If you ever look on her website, it's fascinating. She's close enough to the high school that the students will be able to walk over there, visit her studio, then she's going to come back and work with them on their projects. And part of the money is funding sewing machine and some different fabrics. So that, I think, is going to be very interesting. Also, very interesting, and this we approved before.
No.
And you know what, folks? It didn't, oh, we've already approved it, so I won't tell you again about Mary Mattingly, because you heard about it. The Applied Neuroscience Support is very exciting. The district has already started with this grant, but it's the kind of hands-on learning that I think just makes such a difference for students. And I was able to sit in on a class, and I don't know if any of you guys are taking that class or have had the opportunity. It's fascinating to see the experiments the students are creating, and then they're using the different, they're using technology to essentially test out their theories. And so one of the things the students did the day I was there was what happens when you're in a stressful situation? And the students had to determine what they considered to be a stressful situation. So some of the groups created, how many classes do you have, and how many tests are you going to take? One group created a video that students were looking at horror films and to see, you know, what did that do to them? It was really cool to see the thinking that went into it. And so we were willing to throw some additional dollars in there to expand what the district is already doing. And then we have funded again Author Fest for $25,000 for this year, for this coming year. And it will be in October. So that is the update of what's new. And if anyone has questions about what's new or what's old, happy to, happy to answer those.
Karen, is Author Fest all, are all the authors back in person? Or you have still found a hybrid with being able to bring authors in from other places or get back on away?
I got to tell you, I really hate hybrid, especially for Author Fest. I think the, I think the beauty of this is that one-on-one contact with the author, that sitting there and the opportunity for the author to literally sit down on the floor with a bunch of kindergarteners. Now, what we lose with that is there are some folks that we had looked at that would be significantly less expensive if they were virtual. But I think when you're doing it across the elementary schools, then you really get into a question of equity. Who gets stuck with the author who's virtual? And if you're doing it at the high school, even those authors that we were interested in, like, we looked at Edgewood Dantakat, who would be an incredible author to bring, who typically charges $20,000, and she was going to charge us 10 to come virtually. Well, you know, that's just the math doesn't work, so.
Right.
So it will be in person. You know, we're continuing to work with Carolyn Plotzky and Andrea Zanpatella about what does it look like at the high school and how do you make it work there? And we've actually, we have an author coming to the middle school who just won a Newberry Prize for her book Red, White, and Hole. She happens to live in Concord, and it's a coming-of-age experience story of how do you survive in a different culture than you were born into? So I think it'll be very, I think she'll be very well-received. So she's already booked, and we're working on some of the elementary authors.
Thank you, great to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, just, I was just curious, I was clarifying. When, when you have authors visiting the elementary schools, does one author visit all of the schools, or do you have five different authors?
We typically hire between 18 and 21 authors, and it's a little bit of a scheduling nightmare.
Yeah.
Authors often will go to more than one school because each author is special in his or her own way. And instead of letting, for instance, you know, pick a school, Ambrose have this one author present to all of the grades, we'll move the author around. So usually an author will present to either an entire grade level at a school, or if the classes are too big, we'll split it, and the author will do. And the younger the kids are, the smaller the groups we try to keep, because kindergartners are harder than, say. But by fourth or fifth grade, usually it's the entire grade that they present to.
That's great, thanks.
And then, you know, we get a lot of the same authors over and over again, so they get to move from school to school. And some of them will do more than one grade level.
Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. A couple of questions, Karen. So in your spring grants, Grading for Equity, and forgive me if I missed this in last year's presentation, I didn't realize it touched Aspen. I'm wondering if you or Dr. Ellen Emma can just talk a little more, is this about, are we, are we sort of physically tailoring Aspen in some way to allow teachers to use it differently? Is it about sort of training or coaching teachers to use it more consistently? I mean, I, I don't think this is a secret. Teachers use Aspen very frequently. In some classrooms, students are encouraged to check Aspen frequently. In some classrooms, they're not. I don't really have a problem with that. That's like life, everybody you work with, right, uses tools differently. But that can be confusing for students. And I'm curious to know, too, will the work with Aspen in any way manifest itself in the parent experience in terms of what you're seeing and how you get information? It's a mouthful, but how does Aspen fit into this? And was that part, did we spend money working with Aspen in last year's grant, or is we didn't?
This is, this is, this is new to this year's grant, but I will let Dr. Ellen Emma tell you exactly how it's going to work.
Thank you.
So I think in the short term, what we know it will affect is what parents see around report cards. So there may be more pieces that we start to see later on what it looks like as we roll out during the semesters and quarters. But for now, it will be a standards-based report card is what we're looking to do that is similar to what we see at the elementary versus the A, B, C, D, F report card that we typically have seen at the secondary level.
Okay.
So the sixth-grade team is currently piloting that.
Now.
But they're, yeah, now, but they're doing it, most of the sixth-grade teams are piloting it, but they're doing it by hand. So they're doing two report cards, because they have to still do the Aspen, because that's our official transcript, because that's what's in there. And then they're doing the standards-based, so parents and students actually get feedback on how they're doing with the standards versus just what their average is.
And do you anticipate then, like, feedback from a pilot this summer, so we're making real change, like, for next fall?
Yes, so they've been gathering parent feedback as they've gone through the year in student feedback, and we'll use that, we'll be building with Aspen. It probably won't be rolling, it could roll out in September, although we're doubtful of that timeline at this piece in Aspen. We've got to build it with Aspen what makes sense. So it may or may not be ready to officially roll out. We may be building it through into next year before it rolls as a pilot.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my second question, it's another tech question, so I don't know who wants to take it. If the MYFLEX investment looks like it's successful, is the 7350, is that really all that's needed to sort of get that running, or is that just an element of it?
It's an annual, it's, it's another one of those, they have you resubscribe annually. I believe when we discussed this informally, that potentially you will be able to, to buy more than one year at a time.
You get a discount.
And you could achieve some savings. And I would assume that their prices, as everybody's are, are not absolute. If a district is already involved, I would suspect there could be some negotiation to be held with it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was, I mean, this is, this is very expensive, and it's, it's not something that, you know, you recall, Chris, we, when we did Power Up, our concern was that things that were really crucial to the district should be paid for by the district. This appears to be something that is potentially quite, quite crucial. However, it is still a proof of concept. This is relatively new software, and you've only had the Wind Block five years, four years? I don't even know how old Wind Block is at this point. So it's a new, it's still relatively new. We're, so we're not talking about just buying, not just, but buying Chromebooks that the district should have in its budget.
If you take COVID out of the history, I feel like Wind Block is only two years old.
Well, I think you're right.
I was thinking the same thing, Chris. I think it's only three.
And I do appreciate, I appreciate WIFI funding this, because I feel like this is sort of at, at the limits of what you might consider. And I, and I, and I mean that very respectfully, because I, we need to know where kids are, and I know that you're quite right. Administration has expressed that concern for a while, but that's an important element, I think, to sustain Wind Block. So I appreciate it very much. If, if there are no other questions, I am happy to make a motion.
I had just one more.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure there were no more questions or comments.
I just would say thank you so much. I, we, we see you often at the table, and we appreciate it. And I feel as if WIFI is always very supportive of initiatives in the schools and promotes innovation within our schools, and just so supportive of our students. And it's really, it really shows here from elementary school, middle school, high school, it cuts across, special education and general education, and then also our staff and our district. So thank you so much.
Well, and again, the thank you goes to the businesses in this community who support our events, and to all of the families who make donations to WFEE, either through an actual annual gift or through the different events that we have, you know. And in, unlike some ed foundations, WIFI does not have an endowment. This is all money that is raised every year, not money that is, you know, coming from interest. So it's what the district is, what all of the parents are willing to put into it. And, you know, we're just the mechanism for that.
I just had two things. One is a plug for student innovation grants. I, I know some years we've seen more than others, and just a reminder that those still are a very great way for kids to get involved, sort of in their own education and trying things out. And I know there's an elementary one on here this year, but we've seen some cool geodesic domes with technology. And just a reminder to all the students out there to take advantage of those. And just one quick question for Jen, too, about, I want to just say that through Curriculum Subcommittee, we've heard from the Grading for Equity folks, and I know they've been getting a good response from parents in the feedback they've been getting on that. And just thank you for that, because I haven't seen a more engaged group of educators who, it's called Grading for Equity, but it's touching so much more of their experience of teaching and learning with kids. And I'm just confirming with Jen that after this year, we'll be picking that up through PD then? Is that the plan? When the grant is over, when this grant is over?
That is the plan, yeah. Unless they come up with something else innovative that they want to write for, the expectation is that we're working through that going forward.
Okay, great.
I mean, what we really loved about the grant that came back this time was our sense that you're now really creating something sustainable.
Yep.
Because the teachers who started this were such incredible educators and clearly were putting such a huge amount of time into it. One of our concerns was, how can we seriously expect that all educators are really going to do this? And so now to be kind of edging towards, okay, we're going to make it easier for that to happen, really makes us feel that, yes, this is going to be sustained, and it will become baked into the fabric of the district over the next couple of years. So that's pretty exciting. You know, that's why we were more than happy to jump back into this. And I think it, I think it will. And you do have some incredible educators working on it. They were, when they came and spoke to WIFI, they, as they spoke to you, there was just so much enthusiasm about, you know, what are these people doing? How cool is that? And look at the difference it makes in the classroom.
Well, and we talk at this committee a lot about how powerful the bottom-up initiatives are that come from the staff and come from the, the people working in the classrooms with the kids every day. And I just can't thank you and WIFI enough for being able to give them the opportunity to do that, because we talk a lot today about educators losing passion for what they're doing and the stress and anxiety of teaching. And without things like this through WIFI, to give them that spark again is such, just a powerful contribution that you're able to make to the students and the teachers both. So we can't thank you enough for all you do for us.
We'll have more grants, you know, in the beginning, the very beginning of fall, there'll be another grant cycle. We have heard whispers of a grant coming up that we might well consider out of cycle, because it seems like a very exciting possibility. So we'll let you know if that happens.
Well, now you've got us all on the edge of our seats, Karen.
I was going to say, we've been wanting more.
Mr. Nixon, I'll take that motion now.
Sure. So I, the grand total is a little different when I add up the numbers than what we have in the packet, so what I'm going to do is make a motion just between the education and the professional development grants. So I move that we accept with gratitude. WIFI grants for spring 2023 in the amount of $36,850 for professional development and $49,810 for education grants.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for pulling that back up there, Dr. Hackett, because I could not see my screen. And with that, we will move on to superintendent, chair, and student remarks, and I will start with you, Dr. Hackett.
Well, actually, I think we, I'd like to
Start with the students.
Yield my time to, to our student guests. And Al, I don't know, maybe you want to
Introduce who you have with you today.
Sure, I would love to. Again, thank you guys always for having us here, and especially for letting us have two of our student council members here. We have a lot of interest from the entire council to become the next two student representatives after Charlie and I graduate. So we, Ms. Bergstrom allowed us to invite two of our members here, and we will be having our elections in, I think, about seven weeks. So these are two of our potential student representatives for next year. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah. Um, I'm Mikaela, I'm a sophomore. Yeah, super interested. Thank you for having us. It's just nice to, you know, sit in and kind of see what the school committee meetings are really like. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm Mikaela, I'm also a sophomore. This is really cool. I love, like, seeing this. And like, I was on, like, the Zoom meeting last time, and I just have to say, like, in person, it's just, like, so much more intimate. I just, like, really love, like, listening to what you guys do.
Thank you both for coming, and you can come any time and all the time. So I hope you're elected if you choose to run, but even if you're not, you're welcome to come, and you can comment at public comment if there's things you want to comment about. So it'd be great to see more high school students coming. So thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
And Al, you did have a number of other students with you last time on Zoom as well.
Yes, yeah, there's about
Can you turn the mic to you, just so they hear you on TV land? There you go.
Um, there's about 12 members out of, I believe, 18 total, who are, like, super interested in running. So we definitely have a lot of interest. Yeah.
Are they all different years?
A couple freshmen, and then mostly sophomores and juniors.
Excellent. Please let them know to contact us if they have any questions
Yeah, of course.
About how it works, or anything, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hackett, I turn back to you. Did you have any?
I would just like to add a couple things. One, we did have, the FPPC did have a meeting last night with the neighbors of Parkhurst. Good participation, good turnout, great questions. I felt that, well, actually, it was commented on, that people felt like it was good information for them, you know. And I think it was, it was really kind of the first chance that they've had the opportunity to really ask the group. I'm sure there'll be more questions as we go along, but I think it was well received. So I appreciate the fact that the neighbors are willing to accommodate this. It is no small deal. We did talk about doing everything we can to limit the impact of, of traffic in our presence here within this neighborhood. And we were able to talk a little bit about some of the details, but as you know, as you all know, some of that is still being worked through. So I don't, Mr. Nixon, you were obviously there, if you want to add to that, or?
Well, I just want to put in a plug that the project website continues to be a tool that we Well, I just want to put in a plug that the project website continues to be a tool that we use. So Lynch2025.com is updated. In fact, there's, on the homepage, there's a little site plan that shows the fence that's now up there. And we talked a little bit about that last night. And we've also updated some information on the Swing Space page. So, I mean, that's really it about last night's meeting. The only other comment would be, I think, bid opening for the Parkhurst scope is in like a couple of days. The modulators, to remind everybody, actually came in under budget, which is great. So, you know, it'd be great if that trend continues, but remains to be seen.
And I would just also add, we will have the second meeting of the Lynch Transition Team on Thursday. Mr. Hopcraft is a member of that team. We had a great session, last session, really kind of like a brainstorming of what all the concerns. We have parents and we have teachers, administration on that group and just some really thoughtful people and asking questions that many of us by ourselves would not necessarily think of. So we are meeting with them again on Thursday. And based on the timeline, I will just speak to, actually maybe even ask you to remove the Lynch Transportation update from later on the agenda and I'll speak to it now. We are anticipating by mid next week, we will have a better handle on Lynch Transportation in terms of the time pickup and drop off options. And I say options plural now because I do think that we may want to consider a couple of different options based on, just based on how things might be easier for both for faculty and their children that they may have, that they need to think about in terms of the time shift is obviously as well as parents and the children we serve. So I would say that I think at your next meeting, which I want to say is the 11th, we would be bringing you likely a fairly detailed report around where we are, what's still outstanding for your discussion and feedback from the committee.
And I think that sounds like a good plan, Dr. Hackett, because I just want to thank you and Mr. Marin for all your work with the transportation company. And it truly is an evolving situation. And the flexibility both the central office and transportation is making to try to make this work for everyone is really appreciated. And there are so many interested parties, families, the central office, the teachers, that trying to find a plan that works and taking the time to do it, I think, is worthwhile.
I appreciate your comments and certainly Andrew has done a tremendous job with it. We are actually, we will have our first meeting with WEA and representatives from Lynch Teachers Association on Friday to just kind of lay out that piece kind of around the transportation. Here's our current thinking and here's where we are with the planning, getting some feedback. As you know, that item is, is subject to, at least for impact negotiations. And that's why we also want to try to provide a little bit more option and flexibility for that discussion so that we're not coming in with a solution. Because I honestly, I think both options that we have right now to talk about are equally good and have their pros and cons. So we appreciate the WEA sitting down with us on that. And we'll also be talking about some other things like, for example, moving and the logistics of moving and how have you done it when you brought VO over here from Packing? And whether, I believe, you know, how do we, how do we compensate teachers for that time or for that effort? Obviously, moving will happen on, we will hire the moving. But there is a frighteningly a lot of stuff at Lynch. When you go through Lynch, you have the eye of, we've got to get this all out of here. It's a very different experience and we just go over not thinking that. So it's just, there's a lot of work to be done around that. And I think we've, we've got the right people at the table. So, and that's really it for me.
Do you have district childcare also under your superintendent remarks?
I did, didn't I?
You did.
Andrew, do you want to speak to the RFP?
Yeah, so last week on the 20th, we reviewed proposals that came in. We had one proposal from the vendor Kidsborough, who currently operates our childcare program. So after review, we recommended to Dr. Hackett that we move forward renewing Kidsborough. It'll be a one-year contract with two options to renew and builds in some flexibility where we go with Lynch in the future and Parkhurst here and all that too. So Kidsborough's excited and we're excited to redo it.
Great.
And as part of that conversation, I mean, this is relatively new information. So we had had discussions with Wind Rec prior to thinking about going out or prior to going out with this RFP, which we would have had to go on for anyway because Kidsborough was at the end of the one-year contract. They had indicated to us that they were, they were not interested in offering a program at Parkhurst for logistical reasons, understandably so, and staffing reasons. Part of the logistical reasons is that it is a much smaller space than what we have at Lynch. We felt it's important to be able to offer parents that option, to have an onsite option. We would still be providing transportation to Mystic, which is where Wind Rec will be housed. And both sites are going to have some limitations around the number of students that they would be able to, to, to take in, given licensure requirements around providing before and after-school care. So we still haven't worked through all the logistics. We understand parents are waiting with bated breath. They'd come up in the parent-to-parent night several times. And we were clear that we will provide the information as soon as we can. I don't think it's probably too early sometime next week, early next week, to at least preliminarily say this is where we are so people can understand that they will have that option. And then we'll just have to think through, you know, what does that signup process look like? How do we, how do we provide that? Had we not done an onsite option, I would just also remind the committee that we currently at Lynch run a full school bus to Mystic for both Kids' Corner and for Wind Rec. So if we had not provided an onsite option, we would have been looking at the possibility, maybe even providing two additional buses after school to get kids to the Mystic School. And we think it's important to have parents have the option for the next two years. So we're not locked in. As Andrew said, it's a, it's a one-year contract with two options to renew. And, you know, we understand that when we get back into and excitingly move into a brand-new Lynch school, we've not committed ourselves to Kidsborough for the Lynch program. And that's a discussion for a different time and we'll see where Wind Rec is with that. But that's not the intent is, the intent is to not replace Wind Rec in the new Lynch. So those discussions will be ongoing.
So just to clarify, do we know who's going to be providing it at Parkhurst after school next year?
It will be Kidsborough.
It will be Kidsborough.
Yes, sorry, I should have, I should have been more clear. Yes.
But size of the program to be determined.
Size of the program to be determined, right.
And I'll just, I'll comment that I think I'm the only person who has their child enrolled in Kidsborough on the committee. But if I'm not, apologies. I think they've done a really excellent job. I've obviously had the experience of having my own student in Kidsborough, but I've also worked with Kidsborough as an after-school program in another district. So I've always found them to be a great program. I think they do a great job in all my observations. And my favorite customer feels the same way. So I appreciate that Kidsborough applied again and I appreciate the RFP and the process. And I'm excited to hear that they will be on board for Parkhurst as well. So thank you for all that work.
Yeah, I was driving by VO today. And it's, I think it's interesting, it's exciting to see how the program's grown.
I would just add that I, I think it's really good that we're going to have an onsite option. I think it's good for the kids, some of whom don't particularly like buses or whatnot, transitioning. And the fact that it just helps our logistics and financing of the transportation is just a bonus. But I'm really glad we're able to offer that. Thank you to Kidsborough.
And a kudos, I think, to us as a committee over time for having this dedication to after-school care in other very neighboring districts. There is not after-school care for all the people who want it and it's a horrible scramble. And it's, it's not very nice. So I think we do a nice job and I think everyone who wants it gets it if they apply within a timely manner.
At least within the two programs, I don't think there's much of a wait, waiting list, if any, but I don't know.
I've heard of no one who said, I can't get any after-school care because I think they program, again, within a timely manner. If you sign up ahead of time, they don't, you know, they don't take 70% of the people who sign up. If everyone who signs up by whatever the deadline is, they tend to take everyone. That's been my experience, at least I've heard otherwise.
And I think it was commitment of Kidsborough when we first enrolled them that if they do have a waitlist, that they try to bring in more staff to cover that waitlist as soon as they possibly can too, which was another huge benefit, that they, they don't just cut it off once for the year.
Exactly.
So.
That's it for me, unless I'm forgetting something else. Madam Chair?
I think that's all this time.
Thank you.
I'd just like to let the committee members know that Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe, with Mr. Hopcraft and I, will be attending the Finance Committee meeting this Thursday evening. It is, should be broadcast on Wind Cam. It is a public meeting. It is the opportunity for the district to present their budget to FinCon for the first time. Mr. Nixon, I see a question, so I'll just stop.
Sure, Wind Cam's going to broadcast, huh? That's great if that's the case.
They are, it is either supposed to be on, it's supposed to be broadcast either on Wind Cam or Zoom. I will double check and make sure with the chair.
It would be great if it's Wind Cam.
Is it an in-person meeting or a virtual meeting?
It's a virtual meeting.
And there is a, there is a public Zoom link too.
Public Zoom link, that might be what it is. It's a public Zoom link, Mr. Nixon, yeah. It's definitely broadcast one way or another.
Okay. And do you know what time in that lengthy meeting you guys are on deck?
It's all us.
It's all us.
Oh.
We're kind of a big deal.
Okay. And what time is that?
That's what they tell us and.
Well, that's what I tell myself. 7:30.
7:30. 7:30. So that will be the opportunity for the district to present the budget to the Finance Subcommittee. Finance Subcommittee is scheduled to then discuss that presentation on April 4th.
And vote.
And vote on Thursday.
And vote on Thursday, April 6th. That is their current schedule. So if school committee members are interested in that and attending, you can attend via the public Zoom link. And we look forward to having that discussion with FinCon and sharing our needs for the district for the next year. And that is the only chair report I have for this evening.
Just to clarify, the April 4th Fin, Finance Subcommittee meeting is FinCom's.
Oh, sorry, yeah, it is Finance Committee.
Yeah, Finance Committee, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And if there are, are there any other reports or items from committee members tonight? Okay, then we can move to the consent agenda. I'm going to take them individually. I've been asked to remove the March 14th minutes from the consent agenda. So if somebody would like to approve the February 28th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then.
Can I just ask for some detail on the March 14th minutes?
I owe Erin some information. She asked me for it a few days ago and I haven't gotten around to it yet.
Oh, okay. Interesting. I read through them and I didn't notice any missing information.
But I have it and I'll get it to her.
Okay. We were just about, I was going to say, we're one of the few committees who's actually caught up on our minutes.
We will be.
We did a good job getting caught up too.
I promise, Mr. Brady, we will be.
Going to give kudo, still kudos to Erin because we, we were almost the only committee in town fully caught up.
Maybe we need to call an emergency meeting.
So they are, they are tentatively available to people so we can say that we're caught up. At least they're publicly available.
Yeah, we can say we have approved minutes through the end of last month.
That's right. We also have two gifts to accept this evening. The Winchester Sports Foundation for Unified Basketball. You also should have had a memo in your packet from the Finance Subcommittee that discussed the Unified Basketball proposal. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. You also have it up there on the screen. This is an exciting new program that the Athletics Department at the high school has organized that it is for students with and without significant disabilities. It's been around about 10 years in the Middle Sex League. And we were excited to hear that it's offered now here in Winchester. Also extremely grateful to the Winchester Sports Foundation, who has committed to fund it for the first three years of, that we have it. After that, we will need to consider moving it into the Athletics budget for the school department. And also a grant for newcomers kits for Lynch Elementary students. These provide supplies and books and students for students who come to Lynch with little or no English. Also a really innovative and exciting opportunity for our students in our district. So we are grateful to the Network for Social Justice for providing that to our kids.
Make a motion to accept both gifts with gratitude and excitement because I think they're both really nice opportunities for a lot of our students.
And if nobody has any objection, Mr. Brady, would you like to include the disposition of the surplus textbooks as well?
I just have one question.
Okay, well then, go ahead. Just do that one and we'll come to this one. Do I have a second? All in favor?
I had a, just a question. I do support it, but I do have a question. So this is an interesting program. It's on the MIAA website. It seems like it is in fact interscholastic competition.
It is.
Which is great. Do we have a sense about how many student athletes this is, this is actually supporting? Or is it, is it flexible in a way that it can, it can grow?
It's flexible in a way that it can grow, yeah. We would not be doing cuts, if that's kind of a question.
Okay.
And they do have enough interests to field a team at this time, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was excited to see just how many other programs there are like this, very, very close to us.
Yep.
Neighboring towns. So it's exciting.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So consideration of the surplus textbooks, Mr. Brady, you're up.
I just have to know, the Arthur Series books, are they just in disrepair? We have to get rid of them?
Number 53, Dr. Alan Emma.
That's a good question. I don't know the specifics and I could find out.
2001, I would say.
They're falling apart.
Falling apart.
That would be my guess, but.
Plus they're leather bound.
And it is 11 copies.
Dr. Alan Emma, generally that's how things end up on this list, right? Is that they are so.
It can be, it is generally clustered, like something's out of date. But it can be if something's just in disrepair, it could be a singleton here and there. So what I would imagine just by the date of that, what it is.
Yeah. So I'll take a motion on that if that satisfies you, Mr. Brady.
Motion to approve the disposition of surplus textbooks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we move on to the presentation from Erin, I'm going to, Kuhn?
Kuhn.
Kuhn, thank you, who's our administrator of SEL. Are all of your members here yet?
They are not.
Okay, we can hold on then. We did tell you seven, so sorry. We're really efficient this evening.
Can we move maybe to the school year calendar?
We could do that, Mr. Brady.
Should be a quick one, I think.
Yep.
So this is, I don't remember how many times you've seen this now, but you have seen it a couple of times. It has not changed from when you saw it last. You will note that we have intentionally taken the time, start and end times off of the calendar until we are settled on the Lynch conversation. That's not something that you would need to approve for us to add. That's informational. You are considering the approval of the actual calendar for the 23, 24 school year, as you can see. And as by contract with the WEA, our first student day will be June 18th, 2024. I'm sorry, that would be the last one.
Wow, that would be a late starting date.
I kind of wanted to get through that year because just going back to, the first, the first student day would be September 7th, 2023. First teacher day, September 5th, 2023, with the last school day. If there are no snow days of June 18th, 2024, as you know, the superintendent did call a snow day under significant pressure from students a couple of weeks ago.
I think that was specifically seniors.
He did not receive the accolades and thanks that he thought he was going to get. But it was, we are, actually now, we are one day out, removed. We will, I hope that we can announce pretty soon. I would like to put something out next week to the community to say that we should probably not be getting more snow days and this will be the last day of school. And once you approve this calendar, we'll also include that in that communication.
And Dr. Hackett, you've removed the start and end times for right now. But we will be able to add those back in without having to revoke this calendar.
We will be able to. You'll need to vote start and end times for Lynch Elementary. And I'll say now, there is, we are not anticipating for, for everybody. We are not anticipating any change in the start and end times for any elementary school, the middle school or the high school. It is Lynch Elementary School that we are still working on.
And this calendar also attaches the common holidays and observances.
That it does.
So that educators and families are aware of what many of the major holidays are that might affect the calendar for the school year also.
Correct.
Any questions about this? This should be familiar to people. I'll take a motion if everybody's.
I like you, I like you've got today's date at the bottom just to indicate which draft this is. And just so you know, jinx yourself, I'd hold off on any announcement on the. And just so you know, jinx yourself, I'd hold off on any announcement on the last day of school for a couple of weeks. We did have a powerful windstorm in April a few years ago, knocked out all the power of the traffic lights. Do you remember that?
I do.
All the traffic lights went dark. It was a beautiful day and we had no school. Concerned about the walkers to school.
Something else we need to not boost to loosen the power, yeah.
Motion to approve the.
Don't worry about the superstition.
Motion to approve the Winchester Public Schools 2023, 2024 school calendar as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Feels good to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the comprehensive page of holidays.
Absolutely. It's a good addition for everybody.
Are we all set?
Yes, we're just waiting for Kelly Clark, the Principal of the Lincoln School, but I'm sure she'll be here shortly. And she's a little further down in our presentation, so I think it's okay to get.
Okay, great.
So thank you. Thank you, all of you, for coming. I have a number of colleagues with me tonight to share their experience with social emotional learning in the district. So I'm gonna start out tonight over here, and then when I pass it off to someone else, you can come over and take this seat, if that makes sense. So again, I'm Erin Kuhn, I'm the Administrator for Social Emotional Learning. Just gonna pull up my slides.
Ms. Kuhn, will they introduce themselves when they come forward? Excellent.
And we don't have this in our folder, right?
You don't have this now.
Can we get this added?
We do in the folder.
Oh, we do? It would have just gone on today.
Great.
All right, so I'm excited to be here with you tonight. I just completed my six months here. I started at the very end of September, so that was yesterday. So it's great to get to be here with you all again tonight, be much more familiar with the town and with the social emotional learning program here. Oops, I'm on the wrong slide, sorry about that. One thing I did want to just say is how welcomed I have felt here in Winchester. I feel so comfortable and so welcomed when I enter all of the schools and in other community settings that I've had the opportunity to join so far. And that is something that is unique and is not something you find everywhere. So it's been wonderful getting to experience that. I also want to acknowledge that I know social emotional learning is not a new initiative here. You folks have been committed in this community to social emotional learning for quite some time. So it's been a pleasure getting to see what is already up and running and getting to take over this position to carry it on. So I appreciate that opportunity. So I wanted to start us out, and I don't know why this, oh, because you're controlling it.
I didn't wanna say that loud.
This is a whole new experience for me.
I knew you would figure it out.
I, I was like, what, I'm messing up? Okay. So, this is new for me, having someone control my slides.
I get blamed a lot, so feel free.
So it's his fault that I have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I did want to start out with a bit of a common understanding of what social emotional learning is. It covers a lot of ground. It includes adults and children, or young adults, and it covers all parts of our school day. So here's the nice formal definition that the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning provides. The way I like to think about it is really the set of skills we use to move through our world and to move through our life. It involves how we interact with others, it includes how we understand ourselves and the world around us, and it impacts how we manage and engage with situations and experiences that we have throughout the lifespan. In terms of the specifics of the, there's five, there's this, so this is the Castle Wheel. I don't know how many people are familiar with it or not. And it's also the, in the center of the five social emotional overarching skills that Castle has identified, has done a lot of research on, and the state of Massachusetts also uses to guide the work. So they include self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. So really, when I'm thinking about SEL, from our perspective as a school district and a community, we're thinking about those larger overarching areas and then the smaller skills underneath, and how we work to develop and teach them and promote them in our community. The outer ring of this wheel works to show us how social emotional learning develops in different areas of our life. So we obviously have our schools and classrooms. Clearly, families and caregivers have a very important part and role in developing all of our social emotional learning. And then we have the larger community. So the idea is that in developing social emotional learning, the best way to go about it is in the schools, considering how we're instructing social emotional skills. What's the climate and culture of our schools and our classrooms? What are our practices and policies as a district? And how are they supporting and promoting the development of social emotional skills? And then it talks about the importance and asks us to think about the importance of authentic partnerships with our families. How do we collaborate and work together to support this development? And then aligning learning opportunities. So that opportunity to work with other community organizations, be it after-school programs, you know, sporting, you know, like the rec department or the different sporting, you know, why can't, I don't know why I can't get that out. Sporting offerings that the community has. So just opportunities to really align what we're doing in the best support of students. Okay. The next slide. Thank you. So I just wanted to share this overarching piece of information. A lot of research over the last 30 or so years has been done in the area of social and emotional learning. And the Castle website has, you know, really specific write-ups if people are interested. But the important piece to take away is that what studies are showing is that when, when students are engaged in supportive environments and they're given the opportunity to be taught these skills and practice these skills, it has benefits for them in their academic outcomes here at school, but that it also goes beyond the school day. It really carries on to whatever they choose to do when they get out of school, and also has been proven to have lifelong benefits for people in terms of their overall well-being and success and mental health. So I just wanted to share that, just kind of general broad stroke. So when I think about social emotional learning in general and specifically in schools, I like to look at it through this lens. So I'm thinking about relationship and connection, safety and belonging, and then how we're intentionally teaching and practicing social emotional skills throughout the school day and the work day. Cause again, we're also looking at this not just for young people, but also for us adults as well. So when I think about, you know, you're too fast. You're speedy.
Sorry, sorry, I wait till I see you change yours.
You guys should have worked out this code before.
You know what? I think we're doing the best we can and people just, you know.
So one important, when I, I look at this, you know, when we look at relationship and connection and safety and belonging, those are really things that as human beings, we are always seeking and our system's always looking to connect, our system is always looking for a sense of safety. So when we're able to create this type of environment and experience connection and safety, we are creating an optimal learning, uh, learning environment or experience for everyone, whether we're talking about students or adults. So that's really what we need for optimal learning for everybody and what we strive for. And then I'm thinking about the intentional teaching of practicing social and emotional skills. And I'm gonna get more into how we can do that specifically, but I think it's important to notice that while lots of social emotional learning happens very organically and very naturally, I also feel strongly that we do think intentionally about it and that we do plan for it in an intentional way to be sure that everyone is getting the opportunity to understand and learn and practice these skills, since all of our students, along with us adults, you know, come to school, come to work with different experiences. And we want to make sure that we're including everyone and having the opportunity to learn and understand those skills. So, thank you. So these are kind of the four broad categories that I think about when we're teaching social and emotional skills. First is that the skills are explicit. So these are the lessons that we teach in the classroom. Sometimes there can be a curriculum that's focused on SEL that we can teach, sometimes it's individual lessons. These can be determined as part of a scope and sequence, or it can be determined that, you know, in a classroom, either a student or a group of students may benefit from learning a, a specific skill. These can be taught by lots of different people. They are taught by classroom teachers, they can be taught by school counselors, other related service providers. When I was a building administrator, I would sometimes teach these skills if I was working with students in my office. We may break down a skill and do some practicing and role-playing to help them understand it. Some of these skills, for example, can focus on emotions. We use the Ruler Program here in elementary and middle school, and that's really focused on helping students to understand emotions and to understand how to manage them and work through them. These skills can also include problem-solving, communication, for example, practicing active listening, or collaboration where we might, you know, this is an example of where a teacher might be moving into a collaborative project, and they might decide that they want to make sure the students have a sense of how to compromise when they're working on a project. So just as they might in literacy or math, they may create a mini lesson that is focused on that skill, do that with their class as they move into the content area or the academic skills. Make sure I'm not missing anything there. Oh, back please.
Oh, God.
We didn't do.
Next piece is embedding.
Well, she was.
So embedding social emotional learning into our school and all our work is really when we can choose to use instructional strategies that have been proven to support social and emotional learning skills and providing practice. So when I think about this, I think of the instructional strategies. I might think of a classroom teacher, and when they go to approach planning a lesson, you know, it could be in math, or it could be in English, or any subject, but that they're thinking about what their students need, and they're thinking about what social and emotional skills their students could also benefit from practicing. So some of these instructional practices include cooperative learning, they incorporate having voice and choice for students, they incorporate self-reflection and self-assessment. Those are just a few examples. There's a number of them. So that's one way that we can embed SEL in the work we do. And, you know, adults can do it as well. It's part of the work that we try to do when we're planning our professional learning opportunities or planning meetings for our departments or our schools. We can be using these instructional strategies there as well. I've seen some great examples of SEL being embedded in the classrooms when I've moved through the district. One example I saw in an elementary school recently was where the teacher was teaching opinion writing to her students. And what she chose to use as a topic for them to think about and create an opinion on was the emotion of boredom. So while they were learning about this writing process, they also got to think about an emotion, understand it, and think about, you know, the pros and cons to that. Another example that was shared with me once that happens at the high school in some ELA classes, is where students read a story and then they stop. And then their task to continue from the perspective of that character to continue on the story. So that's an example of where they are asked to practice taking someone else's perspective. Structures and routines, this is another way that it's important in our schools and in our work with the adults, that we are supporting social and emotional learning. One piece that's helpful with routines and structure, and many of us may know this ourselves, but is just that there can be safety when we have a sense of what we're gonna be walking into, or how our day or our class period's gonna be structured. That can create some of that sense of safety and belonging that, you know, promotes us or allows us to be able to learn most effectively. Many of the classrooms I walk through, especially in the mornings, may have a set of things that are gonna happen when a student walks in the room, you know, hang up your coat, put, you know, schoolwork in a folder, do-nows where there's an academic task that they might be asked to participate in, go to the mood meter, which is part of the Ruler Program, and, you know, I've seen students put a magnet with their name and where they are on the mood meter. So some of these routines that we can support their overall sense of well-being and practicing skills. And lastly here, I just wanted to also mention the importance of thinking about how we're opening and closing our school day or our class periods. So this is where it comes into, you know, at the elementary school, sometimes there's morning meetings or closing circles at the end of the day. But these are also possible to do in the middle and high school, where students can be greeted when they enter a classroom and they can do some sort of reflection on their learning experience or their class period at the end. So it can be quick, it doesn't have to be long, but it can allow people to help have the sense of feeling safe, secure, and connected, and also practice some of those different SEL skills. And finally, there's professional learning. As I said, we don't want to forget the adults in this. So professional learning opportunities, they support adult social emotional skill development, and they can also provide opportunities to help support teachers in teaching these social emotional skills, just as we have coaches for math and literacy and science, we have the same for the social emotional skills. Thank you for bearing with me, that was a lot of information. So now I wanted to welcome one of our SEL coaches, Stacy, to take over.
Hi, you think it's nice to see all of you?
I am Stacy Bukoris. I'm a social worker and social emotional learning coach at Lincoln School. I'm delighted to be here with you this evening. And I just, I want to take a moment to say thank you on behalf of my colleague Meredith, who you'll hear from in a minute. On behalf of Meredith and me, thank you for supporting the growth and development of this role. We started off with one lone traveling coach in 2018, and in under five years, we've gone from one to six full-time coaches, five, one at each elementary school and one, of course, at the middle school. And that has definitely impacted, you know, our steady, consistent presence at each of the schools has positively impacted educators, caregivers, and students in myriad ways. So thank you. Explicit teaching, which I'm gonna talk a little bit about, this is important because it gives our students a common language for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating emotions. Some students, owing to nature or to nurture, come to us proficiently conversational in this language already, and others are learning an entirely new vocabulary. So regardless of where they are on the fluency spectrum, explicit instruction empowers students to navigate their ever-expanding social horizons effectively, from their classroom setting to the various community groups of which they're members, and then eventually to the world at large. Kids with strong social emotional skills are confident communicators. They have a sense of who they are, both their strengths and their limitations, their struggles. They can identify their emotions, and they can actively manage those emotions in a constructive way. They appreciate that every individual is unique, different and unique. They watch for social cues, both verbal and nonverbal, to be able to respond in healthy and constructive ways to others. They can build and maintain friendships with peers, they can have relationships with adults, they can look adults in the eye and say hello and introduce themselves, an important skill. They learn that they can better understand themselves when they learn from others who are different than they are. They can play, they can problem-solve collaboratively, and they can evaluate the consequences of a decision and make responsible choices based on that evaluation. So last week, the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community brought in clinical psychologist Lisa Demore, who specializes in adolescents, specifically teenage girls. She was wonderful, she returned to Winchester. She summarized the fruition of these skills that I just mentioned, or some of these skills, as a teenager's ticket to freedom, was how she called it, or a ticket to independence. She described it as "I got me," which can be interpreted in many ways, self-reliance, self-efficacy, but a ticket to independence into the real world. And I, we really liked that encapsulation. So on the next slide.
Thank you. Well done.
And we'll talk about what some of that explicit teaching might look like. So Erin showed you the Castle Wheel earlier, so if you follow with me, this is kind of a recreation of that Castle Wheel. So if we start in the upper left-hand corner and go clockwise, come with me on a little tour of some explicit instructions. So this is what it might look like. For self-awareness, we might talk about visiting feelings, the idea that feelings are temporary, or as Meredith likes to say, feelings are not tattoos. And what a relief that is when you're, you know, whether you're an adult or you're a really young person, when you're experiencing an uncomfortable emotion, sometimes it feels like, oh, this is gonna last forever. So reminding kids how to identify their feelings and, and the reassurance that it will pass is quite a relief. To support self-awareness, we might use the mood meter, and I love the mood meter because it helps us think about, huh, is our feeling, is it a pleasant feeling or is it unpleasant? Is it high energy? Is it low energy? It's, it's helpful for young people and adults. All right, we're moving over to self-management. We are gonna make a hand model of the brain. This is the hand model of the brain. This is the amygdala. This is the prefrontal cortex. You may have heard um of the concept of "name it to tame it," which was coined by Dr. Dan Siegel, a child psychologist, um who talks about the power of naming your emotions. Simply naming your emotions takes away their power and consumes soothing energy throughout your brain. So if you're feeling frustrated or overwhelmed or even excited, if you name it. I feel, I feel really anxious right now. That is a calming strategy that re-engages the prefrontal cortex. So when your brain kind of flips its lid, you can re-engage your prefrontal cortex and just feel um calmer and better able to to make good decisions. So that's from self-management. The Metamoment is also a tool that we use. That's part of the the Ruler curriculum, pausing before you act. All right, so now we're going down to responsible decision-making. Letting people know what you need to feel comfortable and secure. That's huge. That's a huge life skill, one that that, you know, we work on our whole lives long. So in elementary school, this might look like um negotiating personal space, letting people know that you need a little bit of space to feel more comfortable. In in upper elementary and beyond, it's setting boundaries. And you know, we we talk in fifth grade about consent. And and that prepares students for, we're planting seeds for when conversations about consent become more high stakes in middle school and high school and beyond. The classroom charter is another great tool from Ruler for making responsible decisions and being part of a a classroom community, being held accountable. Moving on to relationship skills, thinking about intent versus impact. Being able to acknowledge when you've hurt someone's feelings and letting them know that you're you're sorry and that you'll do things differently next time. The Blueprint is another wonderful to tool to help uh manage conflict between students that we use. And then finally, we're gonna talk a little bit about empathy, which is the cornerstone, I think, of social awareness. Recognizing how other people feel and offering them the reassurance that I get that. I've been there before too. Empathy is a skill that it it, you know, it comes naturally for some people. And for others, it's like a mu- uh, you know, a muscle that needs to be exercised. So for a young kid, we'll say, "Look at his face. How do you think that made him feel?" And you know, actively practicing that skill, connecting with other people. So this is just a sampling um on on that castle wheel, as I mentioned, from some of the explicit lessons that we do as social emotional coaches, classroom teachers, other related service providers. And I think, I think that's it. So I'll move on now to.
Next slide.
Yes.
And we wanted to welcome uh Mary Elizabeth DeCamp from the high school.
I feel supported.
I feel supported.
I only have one slide.
Oh, thank you for staying up front. Now I can just relax.
So hello, I'm Mary Elizabeth DeCamp. I've been teaching Latin at Winchester High School for seventeen years. And um I'm gonna just speak just a little bit about what our school does as a whole and what I do in my own classes. So we have some explicit uh SEL practices at WHS. A new program, a ninth-grade mentor program, uh which I was, I am a member and was one of the original uh developers, meets four times a year with all ninth graders during their wind block with specific topics of uh concern to students such as study skills, self-advocacy, uh sound mind and body, um healthy relationships, and substances. And that's been, that's been overall, I'd say, working well. We get good student responses after each session. And we also have an adult uh staff member working with peer mentors with whom we uh train and practice. So it's a, it's a program that started last year and this year it's really kicking off. Our school offers a lot of opportunities for choice wherever it can so that students are comfortable with uh some of their course selections that are elective, lots of good extracurricular activities, and our wind block, which occurs two times per rotation, which is a six-day schedule. And students have choices of uh quiet activities, uh club activities, meeting with teachers, counselors, attending special events. And uh that's been another successful, successful program um that we've had for a few years. And then the senior fourth-quarter internship has been an option the last three years, I think. In my own class, uh my focus is to create the sense of community in my classroom, which I do by using rituals and routines that um allow students to tune into how they're feeling at the moment. We do this in target language. Students will have a variety of ways to start the class, to share information with each other. I can gauge how students are doing. Sometimes I'll have students tell me how someone else is feeling that day. I try to approach the personal check-in from many um different techniques. And we have a lot of cooperative activ- cooperative activities. And I'm constantly modeling the behavior I want to see in them. And that seems to be something they enjoy uh as well as excel at. And in terms of working with SEL in my own class, I prefer the um embedded methods so that I have a really rich curriculum, which deals with a lot of cultural topics and character analysis and literature. And I can use that as my source for exploring perspectives, for talking about uh all aspects of uh social interaction. And uh students tend to get really involved in conversations about characters. And thus, we're doing some empathetic work, but it's not based on the individuals in the room. And uh to to uh offer students a chance to interact personally with material, I try to vary the assessments of all types, things that they present, things that are uh interpersonal, and also some performance-based assessments, which are good whole uh whole-class projects. And uh these also can deal with issues related to S- SEL, as well as subject material. Oh, and that's a picture of some of the community service activities that my club students have done as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now welcome Karen Fagan from McCall to share some of the SEL practices in her classroom.
Hi, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with everyone. I just have one slide. So.
Now they get it.
It really is.
They understand my limitations. It's front-loading me.
So my name is Karen Fagan and um I am a French teacher at McCall uh for the past eleven years. And it's a joy to really talk about this topic that is so near, dear to my heart. It's, it's so very important. And uh so I wanted to tell you a little bit about what it looks like at McCall. We know it's not easy going from elementary school to middle school. There are a lot of feelings, there are a lot of, you know, it it can get difficult. And it's so important that we really address social emotional learning first because we have to make sure everyone feels safe and included and happy and be in the right frame of mind to learn in order to get to the curriculum. So the SEL, that comes first, and content comes after that. So um we had started, so Ruler started in the elementary schools. And then the district uh wanted to move it up to the middle school, which was such a great thing to do. We were able to get a a grant. So back in two thousand nineteen, we were able to go um and start developing and going to Yale. There were a core group of us who went to Yale to learn about Ruler and bring it back to be able to share with all of the faculty and staff. It looks different because we recognize that students are different when they get to the middle school. So we really focused in two thousand nineteen, our first, our first look was at the charter and at the mood meter. And what we, um with the the charter, you see a couple of examples here. And the idea is every team has its own charter. We also have individual team. If you're not part of a team, individual teachers also have a charter. And it is a living, breathing thing. The idea is we ask students the question, "How do you wanna feel when you walk into class every day?" That's such an important thing. And so students come together and they decide what are sort of the most important feelings? How do they wanna feel? And then we talk about, "How can we help each other accomplish that? And what can we do when we're, when we're sort of coming, kind of getting away from that charter?" So everybody signs it, and you'll see a couple of examples. They're out in the hall, they're in teachers' rooms. And we keep going back to the charter as the year goes on to s- to see, we're kind of taking a pulse, what's going on in class? How can we kind of look back, go back to the charter and really see um how to, how to fix things? And then our mood meter, which again is is going to look different from the elementary school. It was so important to us to be able to have a program that we could be able, be speaking students' language, language. They know um all the vocabulary, mood meter, charter. They know everything from an ele- from an elementary school. So it was so important that we were still speaking their language so they were, they were comforted. But the mood meter looks a little bit different in middle school sometimes than it does in elementary school. It might be um plotting differently. It might be just simply taking a pulse. When I'm in my class every day, the first thing I do is, we speak in French and every single day, ask, "How are you?" And we kind of get a sense and 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 kind of see what that looks like. So you see an example in French as we kind of learn new emotions. We've kind of plot um, plot new French vocab up on the wall. And the other um teachers do that as well. So that's sort of Ruler. We also have primetime lessons. So what that looks like is, once a month, maybe, maybe a little bit less than that, we um have time in our homerooms. And homeroom teachers with a primetime partner will discuss, will break down sort of something that's impacting the school community. It's usually, it's based on what is needed, what the relationships, um based on relationship building. We always start with team building as well. So that's something that we do when we, as we get to know our homerooms, that we do once, uh maybe once every other month or so. But I really wanna get into sort of classroom practices. Social emotional learning is embedded in every classroom, every curriculum, and every interaction. From the moment students walk in, we all, teachers wait outside um to kind of greet students as they come in. And that's such an important thing to kind of get a cue. How do they look? What's going on? Giving them a hello, saying their name, making them feel welcome as they come into class. So it starts with those sort of beginning sort of interactions. Beginning of the year, get-to-know-you activities. So we do a lot of activities to make students feel welcome and included and safe um in in the classroom. We do a lot of student surveys to say, "What, to find out who are you as people? And how can we take what you're interested in and build it into the curriculum?" And that's really important for me when I'm teaching about activities in the target language. Well, I wanna talk about what you're interested in and what the students are really interested in. So uh we do a lot, we do constant check-ins for understanding. Our goal is to meet students where they're at. So we do a lot of exit slips. So at the end of the class, we'll kind of give them an opportunity for reflection. What was something that was, that you felt was, went successful for you today? What was a challenge for you? And based on what that looks like, we can then reframe, "Do we need to go back? Take a step back and kind of re-go back through the lesson again? Or are we ready to move on?" And so make sure that we're sort of differentiating based on individual needs, and that's such an important thing. Student-centered classroom, it is all about, you know, back in the, back when I was growing up, it was very teacher-centered. Teacher was in front of the classroom and then they, and they just talked. It's no longer like that. It's student-centered. We are more facilitators. And so we do a lot of things, um a lot of, we, a lot of us have tables that are set up in groups. So they automatically have a shoulder partner, they have someone, a face partner. We do a lot of Kagan's for strategies, which is a cooperative learning um tool. And we've all been trained on it in in McCall, and most of us use it just about every day. It's somewhere, it might be as easy as a turn and talk to your neighbor. Or um think pair share, think about something, give you a moment for reflection, then talk to a partner, and then talk out, because it's not always easy. We don't, we wanna get away from the, someone asks a question and the first hand that goes up, let's shake that hand. To people, ta- students take a lot, you know, you wanna be able to process the information. So we um embed a lot of Kagan strategies into it. Lot of collaboration as well. We're very mindful about our groupings, who students are in here. So they have um role models and people that they can talk to and kind of um feel comfortable with. And then finally, giving students choice and voice is such an important thing, to show their understanding. So rather than just a fill-in-the-blank sort of quiz, it's, "Show me what you can do with the language. Show me what you can do in all the content areas, not just my own." But, and then do it in a way that works for you. Maybe it's a poster, maybe it's a video, maybe it's, you know, all kinds of different things. And let them sort of take, get independence and sort of get in charge of their own learning. So that's a little bit of what it looks like at McCall. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We wanted to invite Shawna Coppel from Lincoln to speak about um SEL skills in the elementary classroom.
Hi everyone, I'm Shawna Coppel, um first-grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School. So as you all know, SEL, social emotional learning, is truly embedded in every single component of a school day, whether that be an explicitly taught and planned-out lesson or just going with the flow and seeing what life throws at you, especially in first grade and elementary school. Yes, and I believe that firmly the most important thing you can do um to form a successful classroom, a happy classroom, is to connect with your students, to truly get to know them, to show them that you care, figure out what their passions are, what motivates them, their interests, and form those lasting connections because that's where the magic happens and the real learning takes place. You need the kids to want to come to school and to want to be there and to want to learn from you. And once you form those connections, um I think that's when you have a happy classroom environment. So one way to foster a positive classroom environment is simply put, as Karen said too, it seems like there's a lot of cross-suffering, just great, um is just reading them with a smile in the morning, perhaps giving them a fist bump or a handshake, in a cheerful tone of voice saying, "Good morning", showing them that you're happy, that they're there, it's going to be a positive day. It really helps to set the day off on a good tone. And then it's really imperative that, especially in elementary school, that you carve out that ten to fifty minutes, whatever it may be, for morning meeting. So morning meeting is um a really crucial part of the day for social emotional learning skills. So many SEL skills are naturally embedded within morning meeting. Not only are students learning to, um, they're learning public speaking skills, they're learning how to be a good audience member, but more importantly, they're making connections. And especially in the beginning of the year, they may not know that they have something in common with a friend that they haven't been in class with before. And the best part too is that the teacher gets to know their students. And we get to know what our students are interested in as a whole child, a whole student, rather than just the student in the realm of academics. I believe that morning meetings are crucial and they help set the day off on a positive note. If there's time at the end of the day, it's a great idea to incorporate a closing circle as well. The students will come together, similar to morning meeting, and end the day on a positive note. They'll come in a circle and they may share a rose, a thorn, and a bud from the day. So um the rose is the highlight of the day, something that went well. Maybe they got that basket at recess, or they, they felt really confident reading a chapter book. The thorn, and every day, no day's perfect, right? And we modeled that too. I share my thorn too. And we share something that, maybe a little frustrating, something happened. We don't name names, but it's. And we want kids to know that it's okay, you know? Like, not every day is perfect, but there's something good in every day. And it's okay to feel your feelings. Your feelings, you know, you can't, you can't control your feelings, but you can control how you react to your feelings. So we like to model that as well. And then some kids like to share a bud. Lately, my students are like, "We have to share a bud with Coppel." So a bud is just something that's growing, looming, and something they're looking forward to. And no matter what happened that day, it's just a nice way to wrap up the day. So the class charter, it serves as a shared vision for the class. And it's ideal to start to create that class charter the first month of school. So it is a living, breathing document, which is the beauty of it because, you know, the first month of school, you may have all these ideas the kids collaborate on. How do we wanna feel in this classroom? And what are we gonna do to make sure that we feel that way? Say we wanna feel energized, safe, responsible. What are we going to do to ensure that we feel that way most of the time? And it should and it can be revisited often throughout the school year. And if it needs to, it can be edited, even though it can be a beautiful bulletin board. If it needs to, it's more important to take it down, edit it, and revamp it. And we revisit that often in class. So um the physical space of the classroom is also really important and should not be overlooked. I know um at Lincoln, and I'm sure at a lot of other elementary schools, a lot of the teachers um have included calm corners in their classrooms. So it's basically just a safe space for students to go if they just need to reset, whether they had a conflict at recess with another friend. Or maybe they just need a brain break. That's okay too. So they sometimes don't even need to ask, they can just go over. My students love to use the expandable breathing balls and take deep breaths. Or, you know, just, you know, color or something, or read a few pages in a book, whatever works for them. It has to work for them. And then usually, a few minutes later, they're re-energized and they're in a better place to join our lesson or complete their independent work. Now, some kids need to get their wiggles out, especially in elementary school. And that's why um in our hallways, usually if you turn outside of a classroom, there's a sensory pathway for students where they can pretend to hopscotch or do wall push-ups or twirl around. And not only does it help give them like a sensory movement break, but it could also help them in a moment of frustration. If that's what's going to help them get their energy out and maybe they're ready to revisit the issue with their friend after, then that is a-okay. Also, I would say lastly, and probably something that's very near and dear to my heart, is positive reinforcement and narration. Whenever I see a kid doing, you know, the right thing, or, you know, maybe it's a kid that struggles to walk in the hallway quietly or to attend to instruction in an appropriate way, if I catch a kid doing the right thing, I'm gonna narrate it for all to hear. And I'm gonna say, "Wow, did you see so-and-so there being such a role model? My goodness, they have a static coyote, their eyes are on me. You are such a leader. I am so amazed by you." And then all of a sudden, like, everyone else, like, goodness. And then they have the static coyotes, and they're like, "I want that positive attention." So of course, there's, you know, there's logical consequences. Of course, there's redirection. But that positives really need to far outweigh the negatives to create that happy environment, to boost their self-esteem, and to make those students see themselves as a lead. to create that happy environment, to boost their self-esteem and to make those students see themselves as leaders. Um, so I think not only does it help those kids that maybe are struggling and it helps boost their confidence, but then the other kids also seek that positive attention. So why call out the negatives when you could call out the positives and get the same effect? Um, that is something that I think is the magic. Um, I think that every teacher should do that. And yeah, I think all in all, like, lead from a place of love, kindness, authenticity, mutual respect, and just really form those relationships with the kids and show them that you care. Yeah, and that's all I have.
And we wanted to welcome Amy Loom, the la- uh, library media specialist at Lincoln.
Sorry, it's not going to be that good. Hi, I'm Amy Loom. I am, um, the current library media specialist at Lincoln School, former second grade teacher. Um, and I'm super excited about my new role because I get to work with all of the students and, um, kind of facilitate a lot of what Shawna's doing and just spread the love, uh, for the kiddos and that positive reinforcement. And, um, as one kindergartner said, I am the queen of books, so I'm really excited to be on my throne in the library, surrounded by all this great literature that I get to use to teach students social emotional skills. I'm a big believer in bibliotherapy and I think there's a book for just about every problem or, or even non-problem out there that a child can relate to. Um, the first thing I want to do is point out that there's a link to an article called "Windows, Mirrors and Sliding Glass Doors." Uh, we talk a lot in elementary school about how literature, um, and the things that we teach the kids need to mirror who they are, show them a reflection of themselves out in the world, but also provide a window in which they can see out into the world to other people's perspectives and experiences. Um, and this article has a concept that takes that all a step further because mirrors can, no, sorry, not mirrors, uh, windows can also be reflective. So the sliding glass door, um, can be opened so that a child and an adult can step into that other's perspective and walk out into the world and really develop that empathy. Uh, so I wanted to share that with you. It's a link that you can check out. Um, so with that in mind, I use a lot of literature in the library to, um, promote social emotional learning. I connect it to the, the mood meter a lot where we read a story and we stop and plot ourselves or pretend that we're a particular character. Where are we at the start of the story on the mood meter and how are we traveling through our feelings? And how can the students relate to that particular feeling of that particular character? Um, I also use literature, um, to teach growth mindset. I do a lot of growth mindset in the library and right now I'm doing it with kindergarten, first and second graders. And my sincere hope is that by the time they're in fifth grade, I can, um, look at a student and just do a hand signal and remind them just to be flexible. Um, you know, or to have empathy or optimism or something like that. So I use a lot of literature and we, um, the kiddos during the read-alouds, I ask them to do a hand signal whenever they notice a character being empathetic or resilient. And then we tally them and then we create bins of books so that if a kiddo is feeling themselves being very stuck and they need more flexibility, they can pull a book out of that flexibility bin and read it and try to just re-insert themselves in that character to develop that flexible skill. Um, but the big one that I try to, um, I try to stick with the longest is empathy because I think it's the most, one of the most important skills. I also think it's one of the most difficult skills. And as Stacy said, it's a muscle that needs to be flexed um, and worked on. So, um, for the last, I would say like three or four weeks, I've actually been developing empathy hopefully, uh, with the kiddos in the library. And one of the cool activities that we did that's just sort of embeds everything that we've learned about feeling how others feel is an empathy bingo game that I, um, that I made. The kiddos had to go around the room and ask their classmates if, um, if anyone has ever been sad before. And if they had, record their name, or has an adult ever said no to you? Or have you ever been in a fight with a friend? Or, you know, do you love pizza? Things like that, that, um, you have to help each other see that they have similar experiences, they've had similar feelings and that we're all going through this together and we can care for each other. Um, and it's been really fun because I'll ask the volunteers in the library too and they'll be like, "You know, Miss Loom was told no by her mom, what?" And I'm like, "I'm still not over it." Um, and then I record a lot of the phrases they say that represent empathy to me. So some of them I put up in a speech bubble. "How are you?" What a very simple question, but it makes us all feel invited to just be ourselves and hopefully to share a little bit and connect. "I understand how you feel." Um, and this one was really fun from a kindergartner. He said, "How do you spell 'you're worth it'?" Well, like, great word, great phrase, or even just saying, "You matter." And this is coming just from kindergartners and it, um, you know, it gets, it stays similarly fabulous all the way up and sometimes even gets better as their vocabularies and things develop. Um, and so I, I just think that empathy is one of the most important skills that we can develop. And a lot of the books that you see up on the slide, um, showcase those things. Um, I also do a lot of mindfulness practices sometimes in the library where we just stop and take a moment to breathe. Or we do mindful walking where we have to notice that we're not the only people in the room and there's others here and we're sharing our space, which further develops those skills of empathy, I think. Um, and then I think what's really cool about being the library media specialist is being able to share the books with classroom teachers and tell them how I was able to use a book to, um, to teach a kid a specific skill or to relate to something. For example, I had a kindergartner who came up to me two weeks ago and she said, "I have a new fish and it's my responsibility to take care of it." And then just, just one day she came in and goes, "Rocky died." I gave her two books about grief and how it's okay to feel those feelings and Rocky will, you know, always be her responsibility. Um, so there's a book for everything and I feel, um, I feel like I get to cherish them and help the kiddos to cherish them too. And more importantly, connect with their feelings and connect with each other to just build our community based on love and kindness.
Now we welcome Kelly Coff, um, principal of the Lincoln School, to talk a little bit about SEL and the larger school community.
Also, thank you for inviting me and, um, it's a pleasure to be here. And, um, I'm just only looking at Maher here who went to Lincoln School, so I feel like we're having a Lincoln night or something. That's not to say that all the other elementary schools, as well as the middle and high schools, aren't working, uh, high school aren't working really hard on all of the SEL skills that we're talking about. Um, you know, I, I just think back to, this is my ninth year here, um, in Winchester and how far we've come, you know? Um, as Stacy mentioned, you know, um, we started with one SEL coach herself. And, um, look where we are now. And, um, I think it really speaks well to, um, how valuable and important um, our social emotional skills are for our children and for our adults in, in the schools. Um, when I was talking there and I was talking about, um, the school-wide impact that, um, that SEL has and I s- I still believe that and I think that, um, you know, as principals, we have a responsibility to create, to create that positive culture in a school in how we model, how we lead and how we, um, create relationships with, um, our teachers and our students. And, um, I brought this book along because one of our SEL coaches, I think it was Emily?
Um, Amy Dillon.
Oh, Amy Dillon, excuse me. Um, over the summer, um, did a, conducted a book talk with all of us. She wanted to do it. It was voluntary. And teachers from across the district, as well as SEL coaches or psychologists, um, decided to read this book and its Connections Over Compliance. And it's a great read if any of you are interested. I think we have a ton of them in the district right now. And, um, it really speaks to, um, how important connections are with students and how we have to rethink the word discipline. Um, and how it has a really positive meaning versus thinking of it as punishment. And so I know that myself and the other principals have been talking about this. And we even had a meeting yesterday in our, um, leadership groups with our CIA about, um, you know, the importance of trying to understand when kids struggle, what do we do, you know? And, um, I think that the way that we model that we, the behaviors we want to see in kids is critical in terms of the adults in the building. And, um, so I know that we all work on that. And I think that that speaks to any culture, whether you're in a school or a business or, or anywhere else. And so, um, when you speak about the morning meetings and you speak about the closing activities, all those things to me speak to how kids are feeling and how they're being treated and what you create in your classroom. Um, there used to be a popular book, The First Six Weeks of School. I still use it. I'm sure, Michelle, you probably know of it. And, and you give teachers permission to create and, um, set a foundation with your students. And I always say to our teachers, you know, don't rush into the traditional academics. This is just as important. You don't get these six weeks back, you know, and you, you play the games, you build the culture with great stories, all these other kinds of things that matter. And so when we have, when I talk about school-wide, it means not just modeling how we treat each other, adults and students, but also what should it look like? How do you do business? How do you treat other adults? How do you have meetings? How do you hold staff meetings? How do you, um, work with teachers in professional development? Um, when we talk about giving, you know, that voice and choice to kids, do we do that with our adults? And so even the professional development, I mean, Jen, you can speak to that, and Lori, that, you know, that looks very different too in the past nine years that I've been here. And, um, so giving people the ability to have some choice in what they do and how they present their work or how they, um, choose to learn and demonstrate their learning is critical. Um, when we talk about, you know, this whole behavior management, even in this book, they talk about how you should really rethink about behavior management. And really talking to kids about who they are and what's troubling them and spending time connecting. And, you know, I, I've always believed that everything's about relationships. And, um, I think Shawna touched on that a bit about getting to really know your kids in the classroom. And, um, if kids know you care, if you're authentic and you really care, they're going to trust you and then they're going to give it to you. If they don't, I think even it was mentioned, um, in French, that, you know, if they don't feel safe, why would they take a risk, you know? And, um, so when I visit classrooms, when other principals visit classrooms, we're always trying to take a temperature on how do kids feel, how do they, um, seem, how do they, how do they interact with whatever they're doing? You know, and we're doing a lot more now with, um, the performance-based assessments, which lend themselves so much to kids being able to express themselves in different ways. It's not a one-shot deal. It's not a multiple choice test. Um, and there's a place for lots of different ways to assess kids, but giving kids opportunities to work with different children, to express themselves differently, I think all those things really enrich their learning experience and show them the respect that they deserve to be able to learn in a way that makes sense to them. And I think if we don't do that, you really miss out on, um, what kids really can do. And, um, you know, I know we're doing so much with our coaches that are now in place for our math and our science and our social studies and our literacy. And those coaching positions are really impacting how we work in schools and support teachers with so many different things that they're able to also bring the SEL components into what they do when they model lessons with children. And also, um, provide modeling for the teachers in order to take those risks, try new types of learning, especially with the performance-based assessments and, um, learning tools. So, um, I'm just very grateful and thankful to see all the growth, growth we've had and the hard work that's been done over the years. And even before I got here, I know that was all beginning. Um, and, um, so I just want to say thank you so much for supporting this important work. And, um, know that we also take a lot of pride in working with families. And, um, I know Stacy, um, and Meredith, because Meredith also worked in our school, um, they do such wonderful work trying to listen carefully to children and to the parents when they come with a concern. And the days are really over when kids think they just have to go to the principal's office because they got in trouble. Because what we really try to do is help them problem solve. And I always start a conversation with a parent. "This is not an emergency. I'm calling you to tell you about something." And it could be something pleasant, it could just be something that we're concerned about, that we want, we want to invite them in to talk about. Um, but there's all sorts of things that the schools do like us with Possum Awards where you, um, want to catch them doing good things, like Shawna said, you know, you can't, um, say enough good things because that's going to really build their confidence. And of course it has to be authentic, but those kinds of things really matter to kids. And we have the kids come down for their Possum Award and then Ella, our assistant principal, calls the parent and the child gets on the phone with their parent. And it's like the coolest moment, you know? Um, they feel like they've won a million dollars. Um, but, um, so I, I just think we keep at it and it's, it's not that these things are going to solve everything, but that we keep working at it, we keep trying to support children and the adults. And, um, and, and let them know we're there for them and care for them, as Shawna was mentioning too. Um, but, um, I, I just think we're very fortunate to have this be such a valuable piece of what we do. And so thank you very much and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least of our colleagues joining us, us tonight is Meredith Jones and she's going to speak about the SEL coaching.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Um, nice to see you all. And what a treat to meet, um, the folks who will be receiving my students someday, um, at the middle and high school. Thank you. Um, so I'm Meredith Jones and I am the most recent hire to the SEL coaching team and, and feel so fortunate to be able to do what I do. Um, so we are going to talk about, um, the coaching piece. In addition to the, the small groups that Stacy talked about and the whole class lessons where we do that explicit teaching, we also have this coaching piece to our role. Um, and when we do that, we lead with confident humility. That means that we all have skills and talents that we bring to the table and we all have more to learn. We can always continue to do better. Um, we support in that coaching role, adults' understanding of SEL and how to embed it in their practice. And by adults, that means teachers, that means administrators, that means, um, the grownups at home. Um, that can look like a few different things. That can, um, be embedding ourselves in the faculty meeting to do a, just a quick, um, you know, primer on something, um, that's happening. Um, that can be, um, taking the lead on, um, an all-school meeting, for example, in a particular month. That can also, um, look like, um, I'm forgetting the next thing, um, but I'll come back to it. Um, it can, so it takes shape in a number of different ways through one-on-one consultation with teachers. They might say, you know, "Help, Meredith, like, let's, you know, I need a thought partner on this." Um, it can look like coming into Common Planning Time meetings, which are weekly meetings that our grade-level teams have at each school. Um, and, and pitching ideas or being a sounding board, um, providing guidance. Um, and then co-teaching lessons with a teacher. Um, Dr. Hackett, can you advance the slides just for some examples?
I can do that.
Of the professional development that we do across the district. Um, you can keep going. We have a few. So these are some samples of, um, professional development. Great, thanks. Um, workshops that we lead from, um, our coaching team. Um, so it might provide like a deep dive on some aspect of Ruler, for example. It could also be, um, related to relationship dynamics and how to manage conflict in the classroom. Um, for, um, for others, you can advance. Um, that might be supporting our immigrant students. Um, I was so happy to hear about the grant that we have for our students at Lynch. That's terrific. Um, and then really like embedding it in everything you do through play, games and activities. Um, lastly, we have caregiver consultation. That might look like a parent reaching out to the teacher saying, "Gosh, I'm really struggling with something. Can I talk to, um, whoever you have on your team to talk to about this?" Um, and then they would connect us to, um, the caregiver. I think I'm going to hand it off to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for, to all of you for coming. Um, they really took a lot of time to put together their thinking tonight and some of us only met, met for the first time through this process. So I think it speaks to the sense of community and collegial support. Um, Meredith talked about it. I want to wrap us up because you've given us a lot of time tonight and we really appreciate that. Um, just the importance of professional learning, as Meredith said, there's lots of different topics that we cover. But I think what's really important when I think about professional learning is having it be guided by what our students need and what our teachers need. So we're always reaching out, observing, asking questions and trying to meet those needs. Um, we offer, we have so much expertise within the district, which has been really exciting to see as I've come here with some really high-quality professional development being offered here. But we also have the opportunity sometimes to bring in outside providers. Um, we also, in terms of SEL, offer a graduate-level course here every spring, summer and fall that Jen and Lori have run. And I'm excited to get the chance to facilitate with them this summer. Um, and the other piece, I think, when we think about professional learning is just making sure we're using what we know best about adult learning as we provide that for teachers and making it be useful and practical to their practice. Next slide, please. And that's it. I just wanted to wrap with some next steps and some of the thinking around SEL. Um, it continues to expand our common understanding.
It continues to expand our common understanding about what SEL is in our schools and in our community. Prioritizing some social and emotional learning standards for the district, there'll be a working group to continue on that work that was started by my predecessor. The state of Massachusetts has some social, emotional, and play standards for pre-K to K, but they do not have a set of standards as they do for other content areas at this point in time. So we'll be looking to highlight what we think is most important to make sure our students are getting. Let's see. Continuing to identify students' social and emotional needs to inform our practice. So again, really digging into data, taking different types of data to decide what and how we're teaching our students, aligning our professional development opportunity, like I said, to the needs of students, of teachers and our students, furthering developing our social, emotional coaching. It's a newer coaching model to the district, so just looking to continue to see how we can make that as effective as possible. And then carrying on the work of the Wellness Committee that has met and we are continuing on with, and I'm reaching out to get people who are interested in that, so that we're looking at all of the wellness. I spoke specifically about SEL tonight, but my role also involves health education, physical education, working with the counselors. So it's a wide breadth of wellness, and we want to be looking at all areas of that for the district to support our students and adults. So thank you again. I know we took a lot of time. I really appreciate your willingness to listen, and it was exciting to get to share with everyone what I've been able to learn and observe in my first six months here. So I look forward to learning more and seeing you again.
I thank you very much to everyone who's come tonight. Before anybody takes off, I just want to let, thank you from the committee for all the work that you do for our kids. And I know that you talked a lot about having the kids talk about how they matter, and I just want you to know that the work you do matters to us. Because what you do is building emotional resiliency in our kids and giving them the skills to be successful adults as part of our community going forward. And we know that even as parents, we don't always send our kids' best selves to you every day, but what you do is help them bring out the best selves in themselves. So I can't just, I just can't thank you enough for that work, because without that work, doesn't matter what curriculum we put in front of them, they wouldn't be ready to learn it. So, thank you.
Well said.
Open it up to the committee for questions?
I feel like I need a PD credit after tonight. I'll email you later, Jen. I thought this was terrific. I literally, I have a page of questions, but there's not time tonight, so I might email out some of you later. So let me just ask two. I'm actually going to throw this to Madame Fagan. So when I think about our middle school and high school kids who are maybe a little more sophisticated about how they might sort of, what they choose to express, what they choose not to express, and I think about how we want kids to feel safe, happy, included, and respected. Really appreciate all the different ways antennas are out to sort of, to see that that's the case. But, you know, as we know in many instances, for whatever reasons, could be school, could be home, they're not, they don't feel that way. I'd like to just understand, how are we, how do kids understand? Are there explicit or implicit ways in which they can communicate with, whether it's a teacher, it's a building-based administrator? If a kid is not, student's not feeling included, not feeling respected, that can be, that can be a feeling towards a peer, it can also be a feeling towards frankly, a teacher in the classroom when something goes down. So how are, how do students feel confident that they can communicate that, whether it's McCall or it's the high school?
That's a great question, and that's really important. We talk a lot about students being able to find their lighthouses and finding who are those people, who are the, we talk, the guidance counselors we'll talk to since the beginning of the year. We meet with students in part of, as part of our first primetime to talk about that as well, we talk about team building, and we talk about the fact that we want you to have at least one trusted adult you have where your lighthouse is, and we have them reflect. And they take time during our primetime session to really reflect on that. And we, as our, the classroom teachers as well as our primetime partners, help guide that and say, what if you can't find someone? You know, and they always know, you know, when I always say, well, students, you've got me. And we all say, you've got us, let's help you find other people as well, but whenever you have any problem as well, because we know things come up. And whether a student's having a problem, as you said, with another student or with another teacher, and they don't feel comfortable talking to that teacher, for them to be able to know that there is, there is a trusted adult they can talk to, they can help navigate, they can help make it a little bit as well. And we always have our guidance counselors, but that is such an important thing that we talk about at the beginning of the year, because I think it is hard, at the middle school level, it's hard to feel like you can talk to somebody. You think, I just have to keep it all in, and you can feel it, but for some students, they keep it in internally. And that's what we're trying to bring out, is to allow them that opportunity to know, we want you to talk about, if you've got, if you've got a problem and you're stressed going on, do not keep it in, do find somebody and bring it in.
That's great, thank you. And Erin, so the second question I did want to ask tonight, on this closing slide, you talked about prioritizing the social and emotional learning standards, and it's sort of limited in terms of what you get from DESI. Do you see an opportunity to like engage in a formal way with, again, some of our older students, whether it's our middle school students or Elle and her peers at the high school? How do you, yeah, can you just talk about that a little bit? Is that still just sort of an adult conversation, or are there ways you can sort of formally get their input? I mean, I love that they're here tonight, and I see McCall students come to McCall School Council meetings. I, only a couple of weeks ago, put thoughts together and realized that McCall students a year ago were coming to us around, you know, the issue of backpacks and lockers, and it was the civics project. But a part of that was how they felt and whether they were being respected by their teachers and by the building-based administrators. And so that's an important voice that I just, I don't want to lose. So what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's a great, a great thought. I think initially, the idea was to get some educators together, start to pick up where the work had been left off before and starting to look at what are some of the key SEL areas that we want to make sure, yeah, we're focusing on with our students. But I think having an opportunity to hear student voice on that, whether we bring them into a special, you know, brainstorming meeting, or whether we provide them and share some of our thinking to get their feedback, I think is important. As the district already, you know, has focused on the voice and choice, I'm seeing more and more of that in some of the different clubs and opportunities in the buildings, and even, you know, like your question before just said, just that idea of asking kids to talk and come to people and be heard. So I appreciate that suggestion, because I think that would really enrich the work and make it more meaningful and more effective for students.
It seems to me that it could be, and only because we've been making this investment for so long, I think there's a shared language. I mean, I think our students, through your presentation tonight, can have a meaningful and engaging conversation with administrators on some of these very tasks, if there's a way to make that happen.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that suggestion.
Anyway, I'm done, thank you.
Elle?
I just wanted to like make a quick note about how a lot of the like tips and strategies and techniques that you discussed the teachers using, I just thought it was really interesting hearing about all of them, because a lot of them, like I've noticed, or some of them I like haven't even noticed, and the effects that they have, more like underlying effects that I didn't really even think about, especially, like one of them, I know that a lot of my teachers use the one of just like standing outside the classroom before the class starts. And I just think that that, that's like something that I've never even thought to have, like that sort of impact. But like when I was sitting here thinking about it, I was like, oh yeah, like when I walk by those classes and I see those teachers, like I'll say hi to them just when I'm walking by. And I feel like just that as one thing, like establishes some sort of connection between the student and the faculty member on its own. And even like if I'm walking with one of my friends, well, my teacher will even say hi to them, even though they don't have them in class. And I think that that's just such an interesting technique that teachers have used. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
With your committee members. I just have one quick question. So we've talked a lot about the students and professional development, and it occurs to me that I've heard that the phrase, every psychologist needs a psychologist. What do we do to build in the emotional support for the teachers who are supporting the kids?
Yeah, I think one piece is, and I think in some ways that can be the professional development. And I think, you know, when I think about what do we know adults need in terms of what's the best way for them to learn? And that's, you know, connection, it's allowing them time to collaborate, it's allowing them to have some say, as we do with the choice. So some of it, I think we can just embed and continue to support in what we already have in the times. There was something else I was going to say about that too that I forgot. It'll come back to me. And I think we also have a lot of flexibility in some of, and I'm still learning all the correct language, but the flex time hours that we have for teachers as well, and looking at what else teachers might be interested in, you know, and for some people it's effective and some it's not. But I've run meditation, you know, courses before, I've run restorative yoga before, I know plenty of other people in the district have. So that's one piece. Another thing I think a lot about, and specifically, I've been thinking about it for my departments for next school year, is, and it's work I've done in the past at my previous school, is also creating professional groups or using professional learning time as an opportunity for people to bring forth something that they're struggling with, something that they're thinking about, and just that piece of having time where others listen to you and you get to express what's going on in your practice and then get feedback. Teachers, at least to me in the past, have expressed that to be really useful. And I know often that can feel really useful on a personal level, in a nourishing, supportive way, and also in terms of coming up with new ideas with our clinical and counseling staff. And that's a practice that, you know, tends to be used in agencies and other settings with counselors as well. So I think about it with the counselors, I think about it with the PE, health, and family consumer science teachers as well. And I think it's that continuum, we talk a lot about this, especially with the SEL coaches getting teacher input into what they want for, you know, PD, but I think also, what if teachers feel would be helpful for them with that self-care? And to feel supported when they are doing this hard work, like you said, that, you know, takes a lot of energy and emotional lift and whatnot. So it's always, you know, kind of thinking about that and thinking about, you know, I've been starting to think a lot about, you know, year two and how I set up my time with
Month seven.
Yeah. With the people in my department and the overall PD, but also always open to ideas that people have. So if it's any of you or people you know, you know, send people my way, because the more, the more brains, the better. And we can create, you know, more effective supports for everybody. So I encourage that and appreciate that.
Michelle, I could also add, a lot of principals and teachers go to leadership professional development that talks about the heart and the mind of leadership. And we've done a lot of work, I know that with my colleagues and others, not just here but in my past principalships. And it's the kind of work that we just mentioned, Erin, about having concentric circles or something, I forget the name, right? And, yeah, Lori, just, and you bring up like studies and you talk about things and you do it in a very professional way to problem solve, and the recipients listen and give feedback and things like that. And I have to say again that the SEL coaches also, teachers will go to them as they're trusted and they can talk to them about a particular situation that might be going on so that they can get help, support, or they come to us as principals and assistant principals. So again, it's creating that environment of trust and helping teachers to feel like, you know, they don't have to be super people, that they can come and they can get help. And, you know, everybody can have a bad day, and, you know, you might have kids that are really off one day and you just need a break, you know? Take it, they're going to break, or you do whatever you do to, you know, get rejuvenated. Because, you know, it's complicated. And kids do come sometimes, I think they're not best selves, and sometimes teachers come not their best selves. The principals aren't. So, you know, it's giving people that grace too, I think, to know it's human. You always feel like a hundred percent human, so who can you lean on? So I think that, you know, creating that culture and you're building where that can happen is really important.
Can I just also say, one of the things I just, you know, first of all, it was very fortuitous to make the investment that this committee and this school system made when they made it in this initiative. And we would just think about the fact that that was, started pre-pandemic, and we could not be in a better place, in a better time, with better people, knowing that our kids are not the same kids we worked with three years ago or four years ago, our adults are not the same. And you just set this table so nicely to be able to support everybody as we recover from what everyone's gone through the last several years. And we are, I know that there are school systems who are envious of the investments that we've made in that, and it could not have been better timed. Whether you knew the pandemic was coming or not, I don't know, but it was, it's just, it's so needed. And what I heard tonight, that I think is as important as anything, I think about this as a leader of the school system, just your presence in creating a culture, in helping to create a culture where there's trust among adults and kids, and that people feel supported and people feel like it's a happy place to be. Because I think that we all go to places where we struggle, but know that I can look forward to going into a place where a pretty high percentage of the people that I'm going to be surrounded by are pretty happy with what they're doing and working with kids and the importance of the work. And I just want to thank you all, and ask you to give your credentials, but you just need to know that there are some really talented, very skilled people that you've hired before, that we brought on this year. We're very fortunate and you make a huge difference, and we really appreciate all you do and your willingness to come out tonight, understanding that you have to be up in about seven hours.
Wow, what a fun time to have so many of you. Thank you, I feel really good. Back at you.
And Stacy, you made me cry at the back school, the kindergarten parent-to-parent, she had this little, the tooth thing, when they lose the tooth case, and she had this whole story. And I promised myself I wasn't going to cry, but I mean, it was just, the parents hung on everything you said. It was just, you know, that first introduction to who we are as a school system couldn't have been, and any of you could have done it, but it could not have been better. It was just very special, and I just really appreciated that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And then someone else who has to be to work at eight tomorrow, I'm going to say you all should go home and rest, because you earned it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we would be remiss as a committee if we didn't also thank the voters of Winchester, because a lot of the SEL initiative that we have in this community and in this district was supported by an override. And wow, this administration set us up beautifully to be able to do that and was able to tell that story and create a space for it. I just, we can't thank the community enough for also supporting it as we move forward with it and prioritized our Student Opportunity Act money for that as well. So, thank you to the people of Winchester. And with that, I think we will move on to the consideration of open enrollment procedures, though I'd really like to be participating in the party in the hall.
You're so happy.
Now they're showing off.
Dr. Hackett, you want to talk about open enrollment for 2324?
Sure. So we had a similar conversation last year, and I felt that it went very well in and around how we, how you allowed me more flexibility with open enrollment procedure than the policy allows for necessarily. And I think part of that shift, as we talked about, was that we were, we had a day when enrollment was booming, and we really, as part of a controlled enrollment and class-size opportunity, this policy really played a role in that. And the procedure being that the superintendent would come forward and say, we have openings in this grade level and this many slots for consideration for parents who may want to think about their child going to a different school. It could be for a variety of reasons. Last year, we took a little bit of a different approach, because it's not the same problem or challenge that we were, you were faced with. We were starting to be faced with the challenge of just kind of a, the distribution of our students at the elementary level wasn't necessarily equal. And we've had situations where we had classes at grade levels in certain schools that were, you know, fairly low, a little higher at other schools. And you allowed me the opportunity, just, we just basically blew it open and said, we have an open enrollment period, please let us know. There was a form people had to fill out, and we went through that process. And we really were able to grant, well, I would say probably 10 or 12 requests around open enrollment that were, made a lot of sense for the families, made a lot of sense for us. And I would love to be able to have that kind of flexibility again this year, especially as we're talking about going into the Lynch transition to Parker. So I think that there may be some parents who I think that there may be some parents who would like to have that option potentially as we try to also kind of manage the number of students we have here on what is a limited site. So you did give me that flexibility last year. We are already getting the inquiries from parents about when is it going to, when's open enrollment? What can we sign up for? I don't know that you necessarily have to make a decision tonight, but I really would ask that at least you give this consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions around it. And that maybe the April 11th, if you could make a decision as to whether or not you're willing to allow that kind of flexibility again for this year, that would be plenty of time for us to get it out there for parents to request it.
We do have it as consideration on tonight.
You do.
To Dr. Hackett, so if we're prepared to vote, we can.
Whatever you please as a committee.
Can you help us with that, Ms. Bergstrom? Because I, just looking at the agenda, I mean, I see our policy. I just wasn't sure if there was something in particular you wanted us to consider tonight about giving Dr. Hackett that authority. I mean, typically, we would make this decision in late March, early April because the superintendent wants to be going out, really in May, to say, "These are where the spots are. These are the opportunities." I mean, I'm with you in spirit, it makes a lot of sense. There were certainly more requests when we were going through the Vincent Owen Construction Project of, you know, particularly, I think, for maybe fourth and fifth graders, looking to avoid that construction impact. But it can be different for every family. So is there something in particular, was there a motion or something that you wanted us to consider?
Just to give Dr. Hackett the authority to manage open enrollment for this next year.
Policy Subcommittee had just, we had put a memo into the binder and the recommendation is there.
Do you have it for us?
For the 202324 school year, that school committee again allowed the superintendent to allow Dr. Hackett to manage open enrollment process by accepting applications and reviewing them on a case-by-case basis.
So thank you for that. I'm not seeing that, but I'm glad you read it. So it makes sense.
I think part of it that I just want us to remember is in Dr. Hackett's role as a superintendent, he can always assign students to different schools based on various needs. So I, I've said this before, I really wonder about why this has to be something every year we're giving him permission to do something that I think he can do anyways. So I understand the history and why it was put in place and I get that. We don't have to have that discussion again. It made sense at the time. I think now it makes more sense that this is the standard, that each year he does this and we don't, I think we can reconsider if it becomes problematic, but I don't understand why we're reconsidering it every year to give him permission to do something that he really has the authority to do regardless. But that's just my thinking.
Can I respond to that? So when I first got elected to school, though it wasn't happening when I was at the school committee table, not long before I got elected, there had been some concern that prior superintendents had done just what you said. So parents would reach out to a superintendent, make a request. The superintendent would say yes. Sometimes the superintendent would say no. There was maybe a public perception that there wasn't either, you know, what's the rubric, right? It just doesn't seem equitable. Why, why did, literally a family would say, "Well, the family across the street got to send their kid Ambrose and you're telling me no." And so that just became very difficult. There, certainly there can be, you know, some unique extenuating circumstances, but I think that policy was developed because the school committee kind of wanted, wanted to be very transparent and public about, well, if we're going to let families move out of districts and we create elementary districts for a reason, we're going to do it because we want to, let's say, achieve better balance in terms of our class size guidelines, which has always been, you know, a priority for us. So if we have hotspots in a school, and historically speaking, if the school committee wanted to manage those and there was space available somewhere, then the superintendent would come forward and say, "You know, we do have this opportunity." So that's just sort of the, that's the history of it in Winchester.
We've heard different histories, different times. Sometimes it was because the superintendent didn't want to have to field the request period, so I.
Well, as a superintendent, I can tell you that I can appreciate that somewhat in that this is an active community and I, you know, and there are requests that come in that are, in my view, they're more choice of teacher or kinds of requests, which is what we avoid and don't want to get into. You know, I think that it is nice to have a little bit of cover on this from the school committee, understanding what you're saying and maybe the conversation that could go to policy Subcommittee could be, is there a way to kind of look at this policy a little bit differently and have it be something that the committee be updated on? I don't know. I do think the flexibility is good. I can see absolutely here people feeling like, "How come I got to do this and, you know, or I didn't get to do this, it's someone else did." And as you know, it's complicated. I mean, it's every, it's not just the number of kids in a classroom. It's what are the special education potential needs, the service requirements, gender, I mean, everything, right? So we are very, we think a lot about that. We put the class sizes together and principals do the classes. So there's just a lot of conversation that happens. So people were generally pretty good about hearing no. They would ask a little bit and, you know, we'd do the best we could to kind of say, you know, in general, here's, here are the reasons. But I do think people appreciated the opportunity to at least get on a list. Because then they just felt heard. They could, we did a form, they were able to give us all the notes they wanted to give us about their reasons and the rationale. And then we spent, I spent with principal, a lot of time kind of going through those and really talking about, could we do it and why, if not, then, you know, we would let people know. But, so I, you know, I see all of the sides around this. I do think we're in a different time, but I think that the committees, for me as a superintendent to be able to say, "There is a policy," is helpful because this can be an emotional decision for people at times because they, some people feel very strongly that they want their child to go to a different school for legitimate reasons. In some cases, it was truly like closer, which is a different conversation for a different day. But, so I would appreciate if the committee would be willing to consider the motion to allow me that flexibility for this year. And as always, I'll keep you updated on how it goes.
I'm happy to make such a motion. I don't have to state it. The motion to give you the flexibility to manage the open enrollment process? Thank you. So I'll stop there. Well, unless I need to say for the 22, 23 year.
By accepting applications.
Oh, by accepting applications.
And reviewing them.
Reviewing them on a case-by-case basis. I should be looking at the policy list.
I second that.
Thank you.
I would just say, perhaps we would just amend the motion to then send the policy back to Policy Subcommittee to see if there is a way to sort of memorialize the process that we don't need to, in the way that we take a vote every year. So just to confirm it and.
Comfortable with a friendly amendment, yes.
Thank you.
Before we vote, I'm in support. I would just say, a school committee's thoughts and perspective on this policy may change a little bit the closer and closer we get towards a big event like redistricting.
Yep, 100%.
Yep.
Say that loud.
Say that loud.
And the opening of River and Cambridge Street.
Sure.
As well. So, do all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that takes us to Policy Subcommittee. Karen, are you presenting for Policy Subcommittee today?
Uh, yeah.
Is policy memo correct?
Yep.
So you added a number of policies to put forward.
So we had brought, and I have 5% battery and I can't see that. So we had brought these article, or these policies to school committee back on November 22nd at that meeting. And so we are just revisiting these because we had never actually come back and had a vote. So one of them is, let me just see. We had gone through case, Policy KCD, which was around public gifts to schools. Some of, many of these were just on minor edits to, and clarifications from the Massachusetts Association for School Committees. So with KCD, public gift to schools, and for Policy JICA on the dress code, we just incorporated minor edits and clarifications. And let me just see, for EEAK, we had added language that the Select Board had voted October 21st, 2021 on fuel-efficient vehicles. And specifically, that language was, "With all things being equal, the town of Winchester shall preferentially purchase or procure electric vehicles, plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, or other highly efficient vehicles." And let me see, in this one, at the, or, we are, at this point, we're still awaiting guidance from the Attorney General on Section D procurement policy. So we will just advise you at a later date about that one. And then the other policy that we were looking at was EFC, EFD, which Mr. Marin had brought to us on the meal charge policy in the district. This had incorporated feedback from the Policy Subcommittee as well as the Whitsons Food Service and Mr. Marin's work and initiative. So Policy and Policy Subcommittee had just recommended that the school committee take up a first reading of this policy and then a vote at a subsequent date. So really, I think these are split into two things. The meal charge policy, I believe this is the first time that we're bringing it to school committees. So this is just more of a first reading and information for you. And Mr. Marin can comment on that further if he would like. And then the motion would be around the other policies, which now I closed that.
I can see them, EEAK, JICA, and KCD.
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion or is there any conversation about any of those? It is our second read on them.
I'd just make a comment. I think down the line, maybe EEAK can be a bolder document than it is just because when you're weighing at the choice between an electric, an EV or something fuel-efficient versus something that's not, the things will, not all the other things will be equal. There will always be a difference in price. There will always be difference in operating costs. So to me, it's a little squishy to say, "All things being equal, do this," because they never are equal, they're just different. And so it's fine, it's inoffensive, but I think.
Just bringing it in alignment.
I think it could be, it could be a stronger policy, but, you know, for years, we've only had one vehicle, it's the van. So it doesn't really impact us very much. Unless you've got a vehicle, we don't know.
No, I don't, I'm just thinking about the van and, yes, so.
Just yes.
It's, at some point, we ought to consider replacing the van.
And Mr. Nixon, I think this committee, through our workshops and the work that we have done, has also talked about maybe creating more unified policies around sustainability as well. And so this may be reviewed again around some of the sustainability policies. So I'm happy to accept a motion on those three as they stand today.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are rolling through our agenda here. And you did also receive a memo from the Finance Subcommittee, some of the things we have already discussed, so we won't review them, being unified basketball and Lynch busing. I will, just briefly, Mr. Rowe met with the Finance Subcommittee about preschool funding. You have the information in your memo. It does appear that we are charging a competitive rate currently for the preschool. We do have $49,537 remaining in the preschool revolving fund. We do have a $32,458 deficit to the program that we will be able to cover through that revolving fund due to rising salaries and costs. We, the Subcommittee did also have a discussion about preschool tuition, that it should remain the same for FY '24, but that going forward to FY '25, we would recommend looking at a yearly rate increase to be able to sustain the program over time and that that rate be consistent, to be able to allow families to prepare for the cost of tuition, where we voted in the spring, often on our fees. It doesn't often give parents an opportunity to plan for that rise in tuition, whereas this would be able to cover our inflation and, it would be adjusted yearly for our inflation and salaries. And that is something that could always be waived by the committee if we didn't find it necessary. So we would recommend that we hold tuition, preschool tuition, the same for FY '24, but that we may need to actually review all of our fees in FY '25 because we do just have rising costs. We have heard about it in athletics. We have fees for music and drama. And Dr. Hackett has actually recommended that we would form a district fees working group for FY '25 to look at fees as a district as a whole and to understand their impact on our general fund and what we can cover through the general fund and what we need to raise for fees. Mr. Hopcraft, did you have anything to?
I think you said it pretty well. You know, we haven't, for this item, we have not raised fees in a number of years and yet our costs have gone up. And so now we have a structural deficit and we're going to burn through the reserve that we have. And so we do need to think about addressing that. I think having the, you know, the predictability and not raising fees for next year makes sense. I think as Dr. Hackett thinks about a committee, just organizing it early enough that we still have that lead time so that families aren't surprised by the increase. I think that's mainly it.
Oh, Dr. Hackett.
No, I would just add, I just, for clarification, and we all know this, but I think for the public, we know that fees, our fees do not come close to covering our transportation costs. Our fees do not come close to covering our preschool costs. Our fees do not come close to covering our athletic costs. So when we say deficit, what we're saying is that, you know, I think part of the conversation with fees is even, you know, do we continue to charge fees? Or, you know, do we, we maintain some ratio of what our fees cover for the programs we run? So for example, I think preschool, where like 27% is about what we're covering with fees for the entire program. Do we stay there? Do we hit some targets and just really kind of understand that there's always going to be costs that are going to be absorbed by the, by the general fund for our programs? So I think that discussion would be a good discussion, just as kind of set some metrics around, you know, what's our expectation about how much fees do cover? And how do we keep pace with that without, you know, raising fees all at once in a year to make up some deficit that we really are then in the hole? And I think that's what's important is, from my experience elsewhere, I think people do appreciate some kind of understanding of, here's what I can expect for the next several years so that they know kind of how to plan both budget for their personal use, but also the committee to be able to have some sense of, you know, what's that revenue stream going to look like over the next few years as we think about multi-year budget planning?
Well, so I was going to add that, so intrinsic to that is, I think it's helpful for us to have, there should be some conversation about what is, what value does a community put on elements of primary and secondary public education that in some communities are, some would say, free. I don't use that word, they're included, right? So there are, there are peer districts of ours that don't charge, for instance, an athletics fee because it's actually, it's covered in the budget.
Or drama.
It's paid for, right. I mean, it's paid for by the community. And I've long felt that, you know, we go to fees because of some consequence. So for many years in this district, when we had just that exploding enrollment, I mean, we were doing our best to catch our breath and hire teachers and specialists to keep up with the pace of enrollment growth. There was no way we could find the additional investment at town meeting to keep pace with all these other things, music, drama, athletics, transportation, right, et cetera. So you're quite right, our costs do go up. But I would respectfully say that doesn't necessarily always mean our fees need to go up because there are other conversations that we can have. I also just wanted to say, I appreciate the recommendation around holding firm on pre-K. But I want to go back to something my colleague to the left has talked about before and which we're addressing in the new Lynch, and that is this long waitlist we've had for preschool in Winchester. I think Mr. Brady and I are both very excited that we're physically creating more space at Lynch for pre-K. We're physically creating more space. But as I think we've heard, Dr. Ellen Emma and Dr. Hackett previously described, that integrated model we have requires, I'll call it, a balance of students. Is that a fair way to put it? And so on the one hand, we have family need or demand for pre-K, but we have a model that might sort of reach its limits. for pre-K. But we have a model that might sort of reach its limits. So, it's a model that may be sort of enrollment constrained, not space constrained. And if that's true, I can appreciate that. But I really do want us to make a real effort at minimizing that waitlist. I'd like to see us use that space. I don't know what that means operationally, Dr. Hackett. I don't know if that means the whole model is tweaked, or if, Dr. Ellen Emma, you know, you've got that integrated model in one area, and in another classroom you have something else. I just raise it because if it is something else, recognizing, I mean, as a parent of, I had two kids in the preschool program, you know, one was there in one group and one was there in another. So, for the kids who are there on IEPs, there's not a cost, right? For those who are not in that group, there, there is a cost, right? There's a fee. So, is that a way to actually manage with that different cohort of students, what the, the cost is to the community, right, without actually raising the fees on everybody? That's the financial piece, which is not unimportant to me. But the bigger issue is, when that new Lynch opens, we're going to have some extra space. And I sure hope we have figured out how to fill it because I really do believe there's a community demand for that. And, and I just want to know as a school committee member, you know, what will we need to do, not this coming fiscal year, but the next, perhaps? Do we need to do something in the budget to, you know, make that happen?
And I think that's why the recommendation around the fees working group came forward, Mr. Nixon, because I think it's more than just a discussion at this table. I think it's going to take a little bit of work, as you just mentioned, around understanding the expanding program at Lynch and the need in the community and, you know, what, what should we even be charging if we should be charging? So, all of those questions are good ones for us to be asked.
I just, my last anecdote, if I can share it, is during the high school construction, I think it was phase one, we were holding town meeting in the auditorium at McCall. And I remember vividly, an hour before town meeting, there was this frenetic FinCom meeting. There were two different yellow sheets. There were two different yellow sheets because there were two different school committee, there were two different school department budgets. One held firm on bus fees. One had higher bus fees. FinCom wanted the yellow sheet with the lower bus fees. So, I mean, those conversations can happen.
Yep.
I mean, one, one, one was a consequence of the other, if you will, because of other sort of pressures in the budget. So, I, I know that this is something others in the community, you know, care a lot about.
And to speak to the people who are actually looking for preschools, and I have enrolled my son in a preschool for fall. It's not the Winchester Public Preschool because it doesn't provide coverage for people who work all day. I, I think we need to remind ourselves of that and look at that. There's one preschool in town that's a preschool that actually provides coverage till later, and it's actually cut its hours. So, it used to go till six and it doesn't, last I've heard, just like a month ago. And so, I think, you know, we have this gap that for some reason, when a child is, they can be five because if they don't turn five by the date, they're still in preschool. And, you know, we're saying, okay, we're not going to offer you anything for your kids. And then, as soon as they're in kindergarten, we're going to offer something till six. So, there is a demand. It's not being met. People go out of town. The major preschools we have in town don't offer any kind of coverage. So, I, I think we just need to keep that in mind and keep working towards that because regardless of what we want to charge, it's a real need in the community. It's 2023. You know, the expectation is not that there's a parent at home to watch the kid for half the day or more. I think we just need to be realistic about that as we move forward.
Well, I think it's in our best interest too, not just for families to provide that opportunity, but the earlier and sooner we can get students into our school system and start to acclimate and understand the programs that we do and make relationships with parents, the better. So...
We'll save money in the long run.
And it was you, Mr. Brady, who raised that point. There had been discussion with the expansion of the preschool. Then we started understanding that maybe it's a, maybe there are two separate models that we need to run because we integrate a piece, and there's just something that's broader than that. We actually put in for an opera request with the town for some money to fund the study of that. That was not funded, but that does not mean that we, that we have not continued to think about it. And I, I would like to, I'd love to think that we can be in a position, we opened Lynch, that we have that in place, a plan in place.
And I'm happy to help with the study for free. I won't charge anything for the study.
And I, we do, we do appreciate that. We do appreciate. There are certainly models elsewhere that we can look to. So, I, I think that that's realistic. But, so...
So, we're not asking for a vote on anything tonight, but we will likely bring a vote to you at the next meeting about fees. So, if there's any more conversation or questions members have about it, please talk to Dr. Hackett between now and the next meeting. And then, we have our anticipated agenda items for our next meeting. We, is there any agenda items from members of the committee?
I think, you know, one thing that I've seen come up, and I think we should start having more of a conversation about it. I mentioned it before. I'd love us to start talking about Morocco. I see people talking about the fact that everything's being set up here. Are we going to set it all up, then take it all down and reset everything, and then do it again? So, I think we need to start having those conversations.
Or swing space for Lynch, you mean, here?
The answer is yes. We're setting it all up and we're taking it all down.
Well, I don't think you're the person who gets to decide that, Mr. Nixon.
That has been decided, and that's what we're doing. That's just what I'm just saying.
Modular units is part of this project, right?
Yeah. I don't think we're necessarily resetting everything. Is that what we're doing? We're going to pay and...
Well, we're not buying the modulars. We're leasing them.
I'm aware of that. But are we going to put grass back where we're creating a parking lot?
Yeah. The parking lot is temporarily, it's going to be restored and it's going to be in better shape than it is, well, now or...
I think Mr. Brady's asking if we just leave it for Morocco. Leave it, leave the parking lot.
Yeah, if we're going to have to create a parking lot again.
He's not asking if you're going to fix it. He's asking if you're going to leave.
So, I was going to suggest, in, in, attached to that, it did come up last night, and I was a little sarcastic about it, but in a loving way. At some point, we do have to have the conversation about what central office is going to do. And, and, you know, when I first got here and the conversations were carriage hours, the conversations were, you know, lease space. I'm here to please tell you that at little to no cost, we are moving the central office. And it's not going to be an annual operating budget expense for us to do these next two years, as I sit here and talk to you right now. If enrollment explodes and we have to recapture some spaces, but we focused on, on, on using spaces at the high school, and we have spaces at Lincoln that we're going to be using that are not used as classroom spaces. So, we, you know, we believe, and Andrew's done a ton of work organizing this. We've had a lot of conversations. We put out a lot of different plans, got a lot of feedback. But as it stands right now, there is no increase in our operating budget to do that. I, I remember a couple of FinCom members from the town saying that they will find us a space to go after Lynch's bill, when no one's having that conversation. And I will tell you that it's not going, it isn't, and it will not be easy to continue to run district-wide operations when we have people in two different locations.
Yep.
It's just, it's, it's going to be a challenge. We are up for it. We understand where, you know, what our role is, and we'll do it. But at some point, we need to have that conversation again. And I, on top of that, would tell you that I was at a SEEM board meeting today. And every time I go, I hear, "We really are hopeful that Winchester will have some space available for us because we're having issues with our buildings in Melrose. There are one particular elementary school, there are roof issues." So, and they're not entirely sure what's going to happen. But they also want to expand their program and don't have the space. So, not for tonight, and maybe I'll regret even bringing all this up. But as we think about anticipated agenda items, I do think that when we get into next year at some point, we do need to start to revisit that because it's a challenge that we need to figure out. So...
Well, but part of what you're talking about is that permanent home idea, right, for central office. And so, I, I just want to come back to Mr. Brady's question and just say a couple of things, maybe as part of a public service announcement. So, the ballot question that passed a couple, two years ago in the spring, I think, for Morocco, that we called it the Morocco Life Extension Plan, was re-raised, the levy, we raised $3.6 million to extend the key systems at Morocco. It needs much more than $3.6 million. But we agreed to do only that, to extend the life of that building until we could have a replacement sometime between 2028 to 2030. That has been our public commitment. And I'm still behind that 100%. The EFPBC actually has been discussing sort of next steps to facilitate that. And the EFPBC believes, just as Dr. Hackett has been saying over the past year, we're kind of near that point for, I think you've called it a reset on enrollment. So, although we typically would do an enrollment update with every 10-year facilities master plan, thanks in part to COVID and how everything got blown up, there is a growing sense that it would be smart to go back in and do an update on enrollment projections. And that starts with actually looking at what we have here and being really confident about the fam, the families and young kids that we have here. The town clerk has some incredible resources that she didn't have even 10 years ago in terms of detail in the census. And she's indicated she's happy to share that with Dr. Hackett if, if he wants to tap into that. So, the EFPBC even talked about the potential of bringing forward a article at this spring town meeting, seeking funding to start the demographic process for enrollment projection. And the feeling was, it's too soon. Maybe wait till the fall because we first need to do that baseline review of what we have, which we can do with the people we have here in Winchester. We get that information, that becomes a helpful deliverable that you can actually hand off to, you know, a demographer that you hire. So, I think we need to go through that enrollment projection process, and then we talk about what Morocco wants to be. Because at the end of the day, these schools are for our student population, and we have always gone through a very rigorous process to be confident about what is that demand that we need to satisfy with new buildings or renovated buildings. So, I think one foot falls before the other. But anytime somebody talks about the new Morocco, I, I think some of you have seen me do this. I just did it at the VFA presentation two weeks ago. I'm beating the table and I keep saying, 2028 to 2030. So, to, to have something underway by then, you got to get moving pretty quickly.
I just want to add one more, I'm sorry, just add one more thing, just anecdotally around enrollment. We have 26 students since October, and we are projecting about 25 more students in kindergarten than we projected through our budget. So, for example, for whatever reason, Ambrose is going to have to add a section of kindergarten next year, which we did not anticipate was going to happen. So, we are already starting to see, without any of our developments opening, we are starting to see an increase in enrollment that is somewhat unexpected based on the birth data, based on the census. So, I think, to the point, I think when we get into the fall of next year and can see what do, where do we land with our 24, 25 numbers, we'll be in a much better position to really start to think about, okay, let's, let's look at a full-blown enrollment study to kind of see where the rest of this is going. And it would not surprise me if we're having a bit of a different conversation next year around our, our enrollment need and potentially even our, our sections. So, I put that out there. We're going to be speaking to FinCom on Thursday. As you know, we've reduced a lot of sections over the last couple of years, the elementary level. I don't, I don't, do not anticipate that trend is going to continue at this point.
And Dr. Hackett, I, I appreciate Mr. Brady's adding that as a future agenda item and Mr. Nixon's comments, but I'm just going to suggest that we move on right now because I would have a lot to add to this conversation. And I'm sure Mr. Hopcraft and Ms. Bollinese may as well, but it's not noticed on our agenda this evening. So...
That's why I love to have it on the agenda.
Right, yeah.
Well, we're setting it up under anticipated agenda items.
Exactly.
And maybe we gave too much background information.
So, I'm just, I'm just going to stop the conversation right there for tonight, is I guess what I'm saying. So, our future meeting dates are April 11th and April 25th, and...
And on the fly, can I make a suggestion? Because...
Absolutely, because I love on the fly.
I know that you do. I would, I, if it pleases the committee, would suggest that we forego our executive sessions tonight and that we come back and, because tonight was, was a great night.
Yep.
A lot of good information. And maybe at, on the, at the meeting on the 11th, we can maybe even front-load the meeting with the executive session. There's nothing that is pressing tonight. It would just mean, it'll put a little bit more pressure on our meeting on the 11th to be able to be prepared to come out potentially and make some decisions around stuff. I will give you some additional updates on some of the items that are involved. But there's nothing that is pressing tonight that you really have to do. We would not be taking action coming out tonight.
So, and you're okay with us waiting till the 11th, Dr. Hackett? You don't need to schedule an executive session between now and then?
No.
Okay, excellent.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Wyntan.